Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to Charlottesville City School Board Meeting. Today is April 1st, 2021, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you will now join me in a moment of silence, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll of board members?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryce Morrisberger.
Here.
Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And our student rep, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to call for approval of our agenda, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please take vote, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryce Morrisberger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. I believe we do have some people signed up, and I do ask that you please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. There's an opportunity, or I believe Mr. Como has a list of people who signed up beforehand, and/or you have the option to raise your hand in the chat box, and we will get to you that way. So, Mr. Como?
Yes, and I would ask everybody to please use the raise your hand feature. A lot of times, we get people who sign up to comment, but then are not in the gallery. So, we ask that they please raise their hand at this time if they would like to speak or to type a message into our chat so that we can acknowledge them and get them started. And I see first name Gabby, last name W Y C O F F should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Gabby Wykoff. I am a special educator at Clark Elementary. This is my fourth year teaching at Clark, and I feel like I can finally say that I understand why people stay in one school for their entire career, something that I did not understand before. I feel that Clark has not only given me a place to grow as an educator, but to grow as a person. So, the Clark community is a strong one. The staff works hard at healthy communication, and the families support their children endlessly. I think that schools can have a tendency toward us versus them between staff and families, but because of the dedication of those within our community, staff and families alike, I feel that we have a strong bond. We're united by the common goal of supporting each other. We're a community of staff that drive materials to students' houses and sit outside their door while troubleshooting Wi-Fi issues. We're a community of parents that donate sensory tools for the entire school and volunteer to lead walking groups to get kids to school safely while we're without adequate transportation. We are a community that loves and cares, and we want a leader that loves and cares just as well. I have very serious concerns about how the decisions to find our next principal have been made. While we were promised inclusion in the process, we are only now being involved with a forced choice between two candidates that were not allowed to answer any questions directly from staff. We only had one Clark representative on the committee when we were aware of other schools that have had up to four, all of which that school committee chose together. We are also presented a candidate that was most recently removed from her position because of poor leadership, done only by her staff's brave decision to unite and demand better administration. It's clear that this process has been neither transparent nor effective. In summation, we feel that the committee did not represent Clark's needs, interests, and ideas to choose our next principal. The Clark community wants to remain a community. We have only remained that way through the pandemic and virtual teaching because of the dedication of our staff and families, excuse me, and the leadership of Rolando Tillman. If we cannot have him continue in the role that he has been serving alone for this entire school year, we need a complimentary leader. I urge you to consider starting this process over, and I ask that you involve the Clark community much more in this process as the search continues. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carolyn K I L D A Y. Carolyn, you should be able to unmute at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am also speaking about Clark Elementary. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you briefly this evening. I'm Carolyn Kilday. I'm the speech therapist at Clark Elementary. I am new to Clark this year, but I have already become very attached to the Hive and all of its families and staff. For me, with this attachment comes a strong need to speak up for what I see as the good of the school community. In the current search for a new principal, the process has instilled very little confidence. Before the presentations of the candidates last night, the staff felt left out and disengaged from the process. We also received information from parents that their input was not solicited or included either. After the presentations, it became very apparent that the process had not operated as hoped and produced candidates that were underqualified and woefully under-researched, resulting in an inadequate candidate pool. Most disappointing was that an exemplary candidate, our current Assistant Principal, Mr. Rolando Tillman, was not included on the panel despite his extraordinary leadership during this equally extraordinary time. After the panel, we were given access to a document to comment on the candidates, but nowhere in that document was a place to note that neither candidate was a good fit for Clark or to address the shortcomings of the principal search process. Given the deep flaws that were exposed in the current process, I would like to ask the board to consider restructuring and restarting the principal search process with a view to increasing input and feedback from those in the Clark community, particularly from families and staff. I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into finding a new principal, but I cannot in good conscience support the results of this process. I do hope you will all consider revisiting the process and include Mr. Rolando Tillman for consideration as he has already demonstrated his exceptional skills and abilities in this position. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next on the list with the hand raised, we have the first name is spelled L I N S E Y, last name S T R A T T O N. You should be able to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am Lindsay Stratton, a teacher at Clark Elementary School. I have been a part of the Clark community now for five years. While Clark is one of only two schools that I have ever worked at, I'm almost sure I would work in 100 different schools and never find a school as special as Clark. I have watched my colleagues and I do amazing things over the past five years. We take each child's success personally. We have taken pencils, crayons, desks, four walls, and beautiful windows and made it into a place where children come and feel loved and ready to face challenges. When that space was taken from us due to COVID-19, it didn't stop us from creating these same environments virtually. These students are special. These teachers are special, and this community is special. I know how difficult it is to find long-term leaders of such an incredible school. They must share the same passion and dedication to the students and community. Some comforting news in this is that we are already halfway there. Rolando Tillman has proven time and time again his dedication to the students and community. What we need is a counterpart that will provide the same dedication and commitment. Please consider involving this community, parents, faculty, and staff more in this process as you continue to search for the right principal for Clark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, and I hope I'm pronouncing correctly, is listed as Guinevere Higgins. Guinevere, you should be able to unmute at this time.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Guinevere Higgins. I live at 1109 Elliott Ave, and I'm a Clark parent. And I'm also speaking about the personnel situation at Clark Elementary. And I recently learned the disappointing news that Rolando Tillman, our beloved Assistant Principal, has not been considered in the final round of candidates for principal at Clark. And I sincerely hope that he can be reconsidered for the role and that the process can be reconsidered based on the feedback that you've heard tonight from Clark teachers. No resume, interview, or candidate forum can reveal someone's dedication to the work of running a school like actually running the school can. And over the past year, we've been privileged to see exactly how Mr. Tillman has led at Clark. When our former principal left her position at the start of the school year, he immediately stepped into what appeared to be nearly every leadership position left vacant by her departure, even as he worked with two different interim principals. And it's difficult to imagine how a candidate could prove themselves and their dedication to Clark and their care for students and families more than Mr. Tillman has over the past academic year. He's shown nothing but the utmost care for the Clark community, all while managing the unprecedented task of preparing and supporting our school community for virtual learning and the many challenges that have come with it. When I learned that he was a candidate for principal, I was delighted, not only because I know him to be a gifted educator and an inspiring role model, but because he's proven his dedication to our school in countless ways since he started at Clark and most especially over the past year. We've seen him in action under stressful and challenging circumstances, and he has performed with grace and care. He knows our students and our community, and we know him. The principal forum yesterday was informative. The questions were thoughtful, and the candidates appear to be qualified, although now, having heard from Clark teachers, I'm concerned about some of those candidates. It would have been such a gift to hear Mr. Tillman share his responses and perspectives on the questions that were asked. And I'm so disappointed that we all missed out on that opportunity. The Clark community would have been better off for him having been in the running and for us hearing his vision for Clark and our students. I hope that CCS is able to show Mr. Tillman the respect and appreciation he's due for the incredible ways he's shown up and served us to Clark students and families this year. I regularly see his car parked outside the school late into the evenings. He maintains a daily commute to Henrico to serve our school and students. He's full of life and inspiration. He's gifted and truly dedicated to our community. And I hope that you'll reconsider and offer him the opportunity to stay in the running for principal. Thank you.
Next on the list is listed as Catherine Gray. Catherine, just give me one second, and you should pop up on our screen. You'll have three minutes when you are able to unmute.
Great. Thank you. As you can see, I am also a Clark B. I have been a parent and currently a teacher. Clark is an amazing place. We have an extremely talented, loving staff, and our students deserve a superb principal. So, the general public knows why this issue is so important to us. Please remember that we've had three, yes, three principals during this most challenging school year, and Clark staff and families were excluded from the hiring process for both interim principals. What our school community expects and deserves is a demonstrably thoughtful, thorough approach to finding the right long-term leadership, the right principal. Regrettably, we did not have adequate representation or participation during this current search. As a consequence, and this isn't surprising, the finalists who showed are not good fits. I kept an open mind when viewing the community forum for the principal search last night, hoping you had found candidates worthy of Clark's leadership role. The names of both candidates were not revealed until during the forum, so Clark staff members and families have since then eagerly researched the candidates to learn as much as we can. What we see is concerning, in particular declining and below-average assessment results from both leaders' current schools. Neither the search process nor the candidates themselves instill any confidence that either individual is right for our beloved school community. I do not believe that our search is done, and I say "our" on purpose. We are part of this team, and we are eager to help you find the right fit. I implore you to continue this search and to consider promoting our dedicated and proven Assistant Principal this year, Mr. Rolando Tillman. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, next on our list, Madam Chair, is listed as Patricia Barber. Patricia Barber, you're going to be promoted shortly to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes when you're able to do so.
Hello. My name is Patricia Barber. Dear Dr. Atkins and esteemed School Board members, my name is Patricia Barber. I'm a preschool teacher at Clark. I've never addressed the board before, but I feel the need to this evening. I've been at Clark since the preschool program moved over from the Jefferson School back in 2003. I've had the privilege to work with many fine principals and interim principals at Clark. But I do not believe the candidates that spoke yesterday in the forum are a good fit for our whole Clark community. Preschool is part of the Clark community, and neither candidate spoke about anything specific to preschool in the state of Virginia, and neither spoke as if they had any background in early childhood education. The principal at Clark is the person who will be doing preschool teachers' evaluation. A little knowledge should be necessary. Clark does have a large cohort of preschoolers, 60 in a normal year, and four teachers. Your first candidate said she had no experience with preschool. Your second candidate seemed to think that preschool was a place to go to have fun. We have fun in preschool. We do. But we also learn, have a curriculum, and preschool learning standards. She did not address any of this. A principal at Clark or at any of our elementary schools need to have some experience in early childhood education. From a preschool standpoint, I think we need to continue the search, as many of the other teachers have already stated, and find a better fit for Clark as a principal, and Mr. Tillman might be that person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list I see, and I hope I'm not duplicating. I'm trying to lower hands as people speak. Katie Rogers. Katie, you should be able to unmute at this time.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins. I'm Katie Rogers. I'm a kindergarten teacher and a parent of a second grader at Clark Elementary School. I've been part of the Clark community for 17 years, and I've had the pleasure of having my own children attend Clark throughout the last eight years. I love our school and the growth it has made over the years. Throughout my time at Clark, we have been through numerous administration changes. This change, however, feels very different. There has been a lack of transparency. As a staff, we learned the process for hiring a new principal on March 23rd after interviews had begun. There were only two people representing Clark on the interview committee, one teacher and our PTO president. Staff had no say in who would represent us for the interview panel. Why is it that at other schools, the staff had a say in who they chose to represent them? Well, we did not. We weren't even told who was representing us. Also, we were not told who the candidates were prior to the forum, which is different from the past and from what has happened at other schools. This is all very upsetting, as it seems like as a staff member and a parent, we really have had no say in who will be the next principal to lead our school. Clark is a very special place. It has taken many years and hard work to turn it into the wonderful school that it is today. Mr. Tillman has been a rock for us this past year. He has led us through a time of uncertainty and made sure that the staff, families, and children all feel comfortable, safe, happy, and ready to learn. He has such positive energy. He goes above and beyond to make sure that everyone in our Clark community feels included. I truly believe that he has what it takes to continue to lead this school in a positive direction. Please take time to really listen to the Clark community and give Mr. Tillman the chance he deserves to lead our school. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next on the list, the attendee is listed as Ariel Bruner. You should be able to unmute at this time.
My name is Ariel Bruner. My address is 293 Tennis Drive. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am a teacher as well at Clark Elementary School. I have been a part of this wonderful B Nation that we call it for four years. In my four years, I have occasionally seen the division make choices without taking into consideration their staff and communities, the most recent being the process of hiring a new principal for Clark. Although you chose a very capable teacher to represent our staff, she is but one voice from our school. It has been brought to my attention that at other schools in the past, the staff could choose two teachers to represent them during principal hires. However, from my understanding, this was not the case for Clark this year. After attending the community forum last night, I truly feel that our voices were really not heard. I give my students more of a voice and choice than I feel we, as a Clark community, had been given from this division during this process. Like Dr. Odie said when meeting with the Clark staff after our first interim principal, it takes a special person to lead the staff at Clark. As a staff, we voiced what we felt was special, who we felt was special enough to lead our school, support our students and families, and who is a wonderful member of our community, Mr. Rolando Tillman. Please reconsider your choices for candidates for the principal of Clark Elementary School, and please include the staff, families, and community throughout the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next on the list, we have Chris Meyer. Chris, you should be able to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, Council, sorry, School Board. I am going to be reporting on behalf of the Joint PTO Reopening Fund. We sent you a written one, but we do want the public to be aware of our actions and how things are going. We recently, just over the last month, have not had that much to report other than, again, donations received, only about $360 came in. We have total have raised $164,211 from 192 donors. We were happy to say that the last amount of the funding has basically all been distributed, except for the most recent amount received, to the school committees. And to the last month, we did support the CCS Central Office for Transportation. Many school committees have already exhausted all of their funding by the end of last month. Those with some funds remaining are requested to make final purchases by the end of April. In the cases of Beaufort Middle School and CHS, for example, their committees are evaluating the remaining technology or other teaching supports needed to facilitate the hybrid classes being taught. From the beginning, the Joint PTO Reopening Fund Administrative Committee has been committed to the transparency of this effort. It will issue a report in mid-May reviewing how the funds were spent and other observations, which will be shared with you and made public. We encourage everyone to visit ccsptofund.org for more information. On a personal note, and again, Chris Meyer, 124 Oklaun Court, I am very excited to hear and learn that the contract for the reconfiguration consultation process has been awarded by the city. I do hope and look forward to learn more. It's going to be a very important process, and I do hope, and similarly, like I just mentioned, sorry, that the School Board can actively keep the public updated as to its progress. Again, it's been delayed, and I don't think we want to see it delayed anymore. Thanks a lot.
Madam Chair, next on the list, we have attendee listed as Kelly Farr. Kelly, you'll be promoted to panelist, and you'll have three minutes when you're able to unmute.
All right. Give me one second. Sorry. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins. I am Kelly Farr, a first-grade teacher at Clark Elementary School. I have been lucky enough to be a part of the Clark community now for four years. I previously worked at one school before transferring to Clark, and I can truly say that there is nothing better than the community atmosphere that has been created up at this school. The faculty and staff, the students, the parents, and the community are all what make Clark the best place to work. The relationships and connections that the staff builds with our students is like no other. We go out of the way to make sure that they feel safe, loved, and successful. In order for the Clark staff to continue passionately driving our students, we need a great leader. Mr. Tillman has, without a doubt, stepped up to the plate this year and showed what a true leader is. He has taken on so many responsibilities with such grace and enthusiasm. We are truly fortunate to have a leader like Rolando Tillman, and we need to have someone by his side who shares that same dedication.
Is it me?
No, we seem to have lost audio.
I'm sorry, because my Wi-Fi is unstable as well, so I can't tell if I'm cutting out or...
No, it looks like Kelly may have...
She's not in the attendees list any longer. It looks like she's disconnected.
Yeah, she's still here as a panelist, but her button is mute. I think she froze up for a second. Madame Chair, I can move on to the next person. I know that Ms. Farr was still talking.
Lisa, you're on mute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Takes a village. I said, "That's fine, Mr. Como," and then if she comes back in or looks like we can reconnect her, that would be great.
Okay. The next hand raised is listed as an attendee, Rebecca Perrini. And Rebecca should be able to unmute. She's being promoted to panelist, so she can do so.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Perrini. I'm a reading specialist at Clark Elementary, and I have been in this position for about six years. I also happily have three kids of my own in Charlottesville schools in Beaufort and CHS. And I'm also here tonight to talk about or to express concern about the lack of transparency and the lack of involvement of the Clark community in the search for a new principal. And my main question is similar to others. Why Mr. Tillman, our current Assistant Principal, was not seriously considered for the position? He's been a leader at Clark for two years and has demonstrated outstanding leadership for Clark teachers, students, families, and community. He has worked tirelessly to maintain high academic standards while supporting Clark staff and families during particularly challenging circumstances due to the pandemic. Not only has he worked at this, he has succeeded. Mr. Tillman has earned the widespread respect, admiration, and support of the Clark community, and he gives all of that in return every day. It is truly a team atmosphere and a team effort at Clark, and he is a key part of that. I would like to understand why a very qualified and very suitable candidate was removed from the search process at an early stage and why he was overlooked for the sake of two other very mediocre candidates. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, at this time, unless Ms. Farr, we do have another hand that is raised, so I'm going to send that over to the attendee, Jessica Taylor. Jessica, you should be able to unmute, and I'll have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Taylor, and I live at 1016 Hayrick Lane. I am president of the Charlottesville Education Association, but tonight I speak to you as a proud Clark B of nearly 11 years. Throughout the pandemic, you've listened to me plead on behalf of your educators for the same three things time and time again: transparency in decision-making, clear and open communication, and a seat at the table when choices about our students' lives are being made. It is with incredulous disappointment that tonight's comments are no different. In order for the educators in this district to really believe it when we are told that decisions are being made with transparency and open communication, then we should not be told that interviews about our new principal are being held only after they have already begun. In order for the educators in this district to really believe it when we are told that we will have a voice when decisions are being made, then more than one teacher should have a seat at the table. Not once were Clark educators asked, "Who do you think can best represent the collective voices of educators and families as we search for your new leader?" Who do you think can best represent the collective voices of your students as we search for your new leader? What are you even looking for in your new principal? To be honest, that lack of clear and open communication could even have potentially been overlooked had the two candidates put forward by the committee as a good fit for Clark been even satisfactory. There is only one way to make this right and to attempt to regain the trust of this school's faculty and families, and that is to reopen the search for our school's leader and to include Rolando Tillman in that search. He has shown time and time again that he embodies everything that Clark stands for. At Clark, we have what is called the Five Bs: be kind, be safe, be respectful, be responsible, and be a thinker. It is through these... It is through these simple yet encompassing framework that our students learn to be good citizens. We care about each other at Clark and have remained steadfast in our work through this pandemic because we believe in the importance of these five simple pledges that we make to ourselves and our students every morning. It is time for the leaders of this division to decide what guidelines they are going to use to guide their work. To continue to say that decisions are made with clear communication, equity of voice, and transparency is simply not true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to try to see if Ms. Farr can unmute. Maybe just keep the video off, Ms. Farr, and...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm really sorry. I don't know where my sound went out. Yeah, okay, so I'm just going to start...
Can she just start at the beginning, Madam Chair?
Do you want me to start at the beginning?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. I am Kelly Farr, a first grade teacher at Clark Elementary School. I have been lucky enough to be a part of the Clark community now for four years. I previously worked at one school before transferring to Clark, and I can truly say that there is nothing better than the community atmosphere that has been created at this school. The faculty and staff, the students, the parents, and the community are all what make Clark the best place to work. The relationships and connections that the staff build with our students is like no other. We go out of the way to make sure that they feel safe, loved, and successful. In order for the Clark staff to continue passionately driving our students, we need a great leader. Mr. Tillman has without a doubt stepped up to the plate this year and showed what a true leader is. He has taken on so many responsibilities with such grace and enthusiasm. We are truly fortunate to have a leader like Rolando Tillman, and we need to have someone by his side who shares that same dedication, love, and commitment. Please strongly consider what is best for the Clark community when continuing your search for our future principal. Thank you, and thank you so much for letting me say that again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I will ask you to give your last calls for first round of public comment. There's no hands raised at this time. Oh, and I have a hand raised. First name is A.M.I.T., last name is K.A.P.U.R. You will be able to unmute shortly, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Kapoor, are you able to unmute at this time?
Sorry. My name is Amit Kapoor. I live at 5102 Browns Gap Turnpike. I'm a third grade teacher at Clark Elementary School. This is my second year at Clark, and I love my school, the community, and the people I work with. I deeply care about this place and its future. And Mr. Tillman lives and breeds our motto, "One nation, be nation." He has guided our ship through the most unprecedented...
Is everyone else missing the audio too?
I'm losing audio as well. Mr. Kapoor, we are not hearing you. Try unmuting again and see without video if that clears up the signal that we're having here. Let's see.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you if you want to start again.
All right, here we go. All right, I'll start from the beginning. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. My name is Amit Kapoor. I live at 5102 Browns Gap Turnpike. I am a third grade teacher at Clark Elementary School. This is my second year at Clark, and I love my school, the community, and the people I work with. I deeply care about this place and its future. Mr. Tillman lives and breeds our motto, "One nation, be nation." He has guided our ship through the most unprecedented and turbulent times, and I know in my heart he should be our leader. He should be our leader not because, only because of his qualifications, but because of his actions and his commitment to us and our community. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, next on our list, the first name attendee is listed as D.A.V.A., last name B.O.W.L.E.S., and should have three minutes to speak once you're able to unmute.
Hi, everyone, hi. I'm going to make this as brief as possible. My name is Deva Bowles. I am an assistant at Clark Elementary for a preschool program. I started in Clark in 2002, left and came back. And I've been under the following guidance of different principals: from Mr. Stowe to Mr. Pierce to Mrs. Kaiser to Ms. Isley, Keller, Amos Thomas, Ms. Thompson, Leatherwood. We've had so many different administrators. And at Clark, we're not just a school. We're a family, and we want what's best for our family. We want someone that's going to share in the same goals, the same dreams, the same pulse that we want for our children. We don't want someone who really is there for a paycheck or there because they want to change. We want someone there that's there to make a change and some consistency. And I realize that this is a hard job. I realize that this is a hard time. And I'm asking you to consider taking into thought that, yes, Mr. Tillman is a great person. Yes, he has worked hard, and I know this is kind of sounding cliche at this point, but if it's not going to be Mr. Tillman, which I would like it to be, but if it's not going to be him, please find someone that has that same motivation, that same common denominator of wanting the best for our families and our community and our students. Because we are a very diverse group of people. We're a very challenged in some areas, but growing in a lot of areas. And so as a family, we want to make sure that our kids are getting the very best and on a very consistent basis. So I ask that if it's not Mr. Tillman, whoever you find, please find someone who is really ready to dedicate to what we want and the goals and the dreams that we have for our kids at Clark Elementary, and that they'll be willing to stick that out. So I'm asking for those things, and thank you for hearing me out.
Madam Chair, again, I'm looking through our attendees list and our chats, and don't see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you, and I apologize again. I'm trying different formats here. I keep cutting out. So I will do my best to stay connected.
So I think, did we lose Lisa again?
Yeah, it looks like she's frozen.
Frozen.
So I think we can just go ahead and go to the next agenda.
I'm back.
Okay, yeah, there are no other hands raised in the attendees gallery at this time.
All right. All right, I'm going to go quickly here since I've got... You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. So we do have another opportunity later in the meeting for comments from members of the community. So we are going to move on now to adoption of the consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
So I think she's frozen up again. I'm going to...
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Maybe James might have to run the meeting until she can get unfrozen.
I'm back, but I don't understand what's going on, so I apologize again. And I may just take it on my phone and go sit out in a park somewhere and try and do it because it might be...
Well, we can hear you now, we just can't see you. So you could just turn off your video if you want. That'll be all right.
All right, all my video's off. I've been trying that. I tried it from my phone every... I mean, it says I've got a good connection here at home, but it keeps cutting out. Anyways, I said, "Let's move on to the adoption of the..."
So I think James...
James, you're up.
Let's call for the... Approve of the consent.
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
So is this a vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I was...
Not again, are we going to continue?
Madam Clark, I can't hear. Where are we, Madam Clark?
We're waiting for your vote, Mr. Wade, because I believe Ms. Torres said yes.
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Wait, I'm sorry. Leslie, did you hear it? Did she say that she had a comment for the consent agenda?
Yeah, we had talked earlier. I think, you ready?
I'm here, I'm sorry. I froze. I'm trying to just do this from my phone at this point. I obviously froze when the motion was made, but I was requesting to pull 6.5 from the consent agenda as I had some questions about that. And if the board is in agreement, we could bring that back to our April 12th meeting, the public part of that meeting. And that has to do with a right of way, and I needed to meet with Kim, and I had some questions about that.
I'll do a friendly amendment. We need a second to the friendly amendment.
I'll second the friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Very friendly.
Yep, keep it moving.
So then I guess if we could call roll on, or call for a vote on that, please.
Okay, so we'll start over. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And next, we will move on to item 7.0 and 7.1, action items, and then approval for grades 6 through 12, the health curriculum adoption. Dr. Odie?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. In March, staff presented to you information regarding the Goodheart Wilcox Comprehensive Health Resources for grades 6 through 12. We did share those resources with the community for input and received a few public comments, all of which were positive. That review ended on March 31st yesterday. At this time, we would like you to please take action on these resources.
I move the adoption, or the adoption of the health curriculum as proposed by the superintendent.
I'll second that.
Technology, Madam Clark, will you please take the vote, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will move to items for discussion. 8.1 is our Special Education Annual Plan Part B. Dr. Odie, did you want to pass that on to whoever will be presenting, please?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. King will introduce Ms. Katrina Lee, who will present our Special Education Annual Plan. Dr. King?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. This evening, we have Ms. Katrina Lee, who is our Supervisor of Special Education, and she's going to present the proposed budget for the federal flow-through funding for special education for next school year, the 2021-2022 school year, and it is for both the school-aged children as well as our preschoolers. Ms. Lee?
Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. King, Madam Chair, members of the School Board. Thank you for allowing us to share our Special Education Annual Plan with you this afternoon. The funds through this plan allow us to serve our students with disabilities within Charlottesville City Schools and also our students within the community who enrolled in our private schools and who choose to opt into services if students have disabilities. Get to the next slide. So looking at our, and this is the first review for you all, and we'll come back again next month. This is the first review of the federal grant. The total you'll see as 1.1 million dollars. This amount will be amended when the Virginia Department of Education receives our, their actual allocation for the state of Virginia from the federal government. At this point, those figures and those numbers are based on the actual calculations in dollars from our previous year, which are the figures that we use to base our current annual plan until those numbers are actually solidified, and the Virginia Department of Education allocates those funds, and they're received. So right now, and as you look at this, you see that a majority of our funding is spent with personnel services, and that is with our teachers and our staff and also the employee benefits. Purchase services, other charges, materials and supplies, those are items that we use to support our classrooms with materials and things that we need to support our students with disabilities. Again, this is only a portion of the funds we use for that. You can go ahead, Leslie. All right. This is the same information just presented in a visual form, and it just shows you that the majority of those federal funds that are captured are used for personnel services and employee benefits to make sure that we have highly qualified staff to support our students. And that's not only our special education teachers, but it encompasses our school psychologists, our speech pathologists, and other specialists that we use to service our students with special education needs. Again, this is just a summary where we started, and you have this in your board packet with the specifics in it. So it talks about a proportionate set, proportionate share also is used to support our students in private schools. So the funds are used to support our students in Charlottesville City Schools as well as our students who are enrolled in private schools. We do consultation with our private schools and for families who opt in, there's a proportionate amount that we serve those students with, not directly in terms of teaching staff. But we usually provide support with materials in consultation in the private schools. Okay, again, our goal is always to provide high-quality instruction for all of our students, making sure that our programs individualize, meeting the needs of all of our students, emotionally, behaviorally, academically. Are there any questions about the allocations or the information that you have in your board packet for this year's draft annual plan for first review? And again, this will come back to you again next month for action.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Uh, any other board members have questions?
Well, do we know when the actual figures for this next year will be known, when we can actually plug in the real figures as opposed to what were our last year's figures?
Great question, Dr. Kraft. So in speaking with DOE, they, our final figures come in usually a little bit after the action, but they don't very much, uh, maybe a couple thousand dollars from where we are right now. But the actual figures don't very much. Um, and then, and the fall usually will get our final allocations and will come in, but they won't very much from where we are right now.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lee. All right. Next, I believe, or do we're taking action on that next, next month? Is that correct? Yes, okay. Um, we will move on to the 2021-2022 Career and Technical Education Local Plan. Uh, Dr. Odie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, tonight, we would like to share with you and recommend that the board take action on our CTE local plan. Dr. Beth Baptist, our CTE coordinator, will present that plan to you at this time. Dr. Baptist?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Odie, um, just like with the special ed plan, we do submit an annual plan to the State Department. We have also been told to use figures from this past year. Last year, it was 101,931 dollars and 68 cents. And so I have written the grant for that same amount and pretty much have included same information in the grant, making some changes based on how we've had to make changes during the pandemic. Um, in case Dr. Kraft has the same question about when we would be able to know final numbers, uh, we usually know in, in July or maybe the first of August. And if the trends are the same, last year it only went up about $3,000. So I'm not expecting great changes whenever we do get a change. But this money is to be used for the CTE programs, both at Beaufort and at the high school, and is to support some of the extra things that we would do for what we call our special populations primarily, which are students who are students with disabilities or limited English speaking or have other risk factors. But we do use much of this money as much as we can for equipment that we can keep our CTE programs with state-of-the-art equipment. So that's where about 75, 70, 80,000 we use there, and then the rest we would use for curriculum or staff development, or also a very small portion of administrative cost can be used in the grant, but it's no more than 5% of the grant can be used for administration. So I would ask if you've got any questions. If not, I would appreciate action because this is due enrichment on April the 30th.
I'll move the approval of the K-Tech, um, of the, I'm sorry, the Career and Technical Education Plan.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Or further questions? All right, Madam Clerk, will you take a vote, please?
Ma'am, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger.
Yes.
Dr. Kraft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baptist.
Thank you.
All right. Um, 8.3 is our 2021 Summer School Plan. Dr. Odie?
All right. Thank you again, Madam Chair. Uh, as we continue to work to address the impact of COVID-19, we are planning a robust summer program for our students. Uh, we realize that summer learning and enrichment programs can be beneficial in meeting the social, emotional, and mental health and academic needs of students. So tonight, you will hear about how we're working to provide a variety of opportunities and experiences for the students so that remediation can occur and enrichment is provided wherever possible. Tonight, you will hear from a variety of presenters regarding our summer plans. Neely Minton, who serves as our summer school coordinator, in addition to her other roles as Social Studies and World Languages Coordinator. We'll also hear from Dr. Jesse Turner, Beaufort Middle School Principal, Dr. Eric Erizari, CHS Principal, and Jill Dahl, LMA Program Administrator. We also have with us Vic Garber from Parks and Rec to share camp opportunities for students. And we have Jessica Maslini from the YMCA in the audience as well. At this time, I'll turn it over to Neely to get us started. Neely?
Thank you, Dr. Odie. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, Leslie, if you can put up the slides. So while those are getting going, um, thank you, Leslie. Um, I'm going to start by providing a big-picture overview of our summer school programs and offerings for 2021 so that you all have a, an understanding of the guiding principles that have informed our planning and decision-making for this summer. Leslie, can you go to the next slide? That's it. Okay. Um, so as we sat down to plan summer school this year, we outlined these guiding principles that are shown here based on student needs, observations throughout the school year, and feedback from stakeholders. So first of all, we really want to approach summer school from a whole-child asset-based approach. Yes, we're focused, like Dr. Odie said, on remediation and building foundational skills, especially in literacy and math in grades K-8. And we believe enrichment, movement, and play are equally as important in a high-quality summer school curriculum. Secondly, we're continuing our CRT, our culturally responsive teaching, and anti-racist approach by providing rigorous learning experiences that build upon students' local context, and we're incorporating anti-racist practices within the programs that offer a social justice component, like Freedom School, which I'll explain in a few moments. Excuse me, I've got something in my throat. Um, okay. Third, we are prioritizing in-person learning. Um, our summer school programs are primarily in-person, and at the same time, we have a virtual option available through Freedom School. The key is that we want to meet the needs of our students and our families, and part of that involves offering a variety of options. We're really excited to be leveraging community partnerships for our summer school offerings, and I'll describe how we're doing that for our Elementary Power Scholars Program in just a moment. Leslie, next slide.
Take your time, Neely. That is the worst feeling. I've been there.
So sorry, it just came upon me all of a sudden. Um, okay, I think it's gone. Okay. I'm very excited to describe our summer school program for rising first through rising sixth graders this year. We are thrilled to announce that we'll be partnering with the YMCA to, um, to offer a research-based program called Power Scholars Academy. This program, which is 100% free for our families, will embed each of the guiding principles I described in the last slide. This in-person program will run from June 21st through July 23rd, which is five full weeks, Monday through Friday. The academic portion will run from 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, and the YMCA will offer childcare from 7:30 in the morning to 8:30 in the morning, and from 4:30 in the afternoon to 5:30. So in other words, the entire program basically runs from 7:30 to 5:30. So it offers a full day of learning experiences and childcare for our students and our families. Transportation will be provided, um, and that will basically entail dropping off around 8:30 a.m. and picking up around 4:30 p.m. in terms of the busing. Um, our anticipated enrollment for rising first through rising fourth is 360 total students, and our anticipated enrollment for rising fifth through rising sixth grade, which is also part of Power Scholars Academy, is 84 students. Um, in terms of the selection process for students, principals are inviting students to enroll based on our CTSS process, selecting students who have been receiving Tier Two and Tier Three interventions this year. So this selection process lines up with the data points mentioned on this slide, including PALS data, MAP data, SOL testing data, and data on engagement during virtual learning. So all of those data points are taken into consideration as we select students for Power Scholars. In the mornings on Mondays through Thursdays, students will engage in social, emotional learning, literacy, and math with our Charlottesville City Schools teachers, and, um, a YMCA staff member will actually be present with our teachers as we're doing that portion of our curriculum and instruction. And then after lunch in the afternoon, our students will engage in enrichment opportunities with YMCA staff, and these enrichment opportunities are really exciting. They include STEAM, social studies experiences, art, music, field trips, play, and active projects. So we're really, that's what we were talking about on the last slide, um, in terms of one of our guiding principles being that we are not only doing foundational skills and skill-building with our students this year, but we're also wanting to offer enrichment and take that asset-whole-child approach to summer school and summer programs. Um, we'll be using a curriculum called Bell Excel that is offered through Power Scholars for SEL literacy and math, and we'll be supplementing the literacy piece to ensure that we're focusing on foundational skills for our youngest learners. On Fridays, um, Charlottesville City Schools won't, uh, teachers won't be teaching on Fridays, but YMCA staff will offer a full day of enrichment for our students, which will include guest speakers, field trips, community projects, and play. And as Dr. Odie mentioned, Jessica Maslini, who's the Chief Executive Officer, is in our audience. I really want to thank her and Benita Patton, who's the Association Director of Youth Development, for their collaboration. Also, the rest of the staff at the YMCA has been wonderful, very wonderful to work with them, and we're happy to be able to partner with them to deliver these amazing opportunities for our students and families this summer. For students who are not enrolling in Power Scholars or not invited to Power Scholars, we have additional opportunities and options for them that we'll describe shortly. Um, we'll talk about Parks and Rec. We'll talk about Freedom School. We also have some other summer programs. So we're excited, again, that we're able to offer a variety of options for our students and families, including our in-person free Power Scholars Academy. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Jesse Turner, who is Principal of Beaufort Middle School.
Can I ask a question first, Madam Chair?
Yes, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, my question is where will these, um, where is the Power Scholars Program going to be held?
So the Power Scholars Program is held in our schools. Um, so, go ahead.
Where?
Um, it'll be held at, let me make sure I have this right. Um, we are holding it at Clark, Greenbrier, Jackson Villa, and Walker. And so what happens is Clark and Burnley Moran are paired together. So Clark and Burnley Moran students will attend at Clark. Greenbrier and Venable students will attend at Greenbrier, and Jackson Villa and Johnson students will attend at Jackson Villa, and then our rising fifth and sixth graders will attend at Walker.
Um, and where did we cut, where is this curriculum coming from? Like, is that related to the curriculum that we've been working with already?
Um, this curriculum is part of the Power Scholars Program, which is research-based. Um, we've had a lot of conversations with the folks at Bell Excel who are offering the curriculum. Now, our coordinators, um, Stephanie Tittle and Carolyn Swift, math and literacy coordinators, will be working with the curriculum to make sure that we have continuity with the curriculum, curricula that we currently offer in math and literacy in the division. So we may be switching out some of the instructional materials, uh, to make sure there's continuity with our current curricula.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question while we're on this particular section?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Perrier.
Um, hi, Ms. Minton. When we're talking about the student-teacher ratio, are the classrooms going to be able to do the new socially-distanced regulations of three feet apart, or is this student-teacher ratio still encompassing the six-foot apart in the individual classroom?
Neely, I, I'll start with that. Uh, Ms. Perrier, if you're okay. Uh, we're planning to continue with our six-feet-apart mitigation. We're, we have, uh, allowed for 12 students to be in the classrooms, 12 to one, so that we can maintain that six-feet-apart distance and maintain safety for students and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Odie.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Madam Chair, as well, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Is, are there any offerings for summer school for high school students?
We're, Dr. Erizari is gonna, um, uh, share what he's gonna do for high school in just a few moments.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, so I, I was just sharing for elementary Power Scholars, and then we're gonna turn it over to middle school and high school to talk about their offerings.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Neely, how are the students going to be selected to be in this program?
So, uh, Mr. Bryant, great question. They are being selected, um, by principals and by acting summer school principals, which are often our assistant principals at the schools. Uh, they're being invited based on our CTSS, Charlottesville Tiered Systems of Support Process. Um, so students who are currently receiving Tier Two or Three interventions as part of the CTSS process, they will be invited to Power Scholars. And I will also talk a little bit about Freedom School in just, in a little bit after the next folks share. And, um, we will also have some options to invite students to apply to Freedom School based on literacy needs there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just tag-team onto that question? Um, I'm wondering, first of all, this sounds like a wonderful, um, program, and congratulations. I think it sounds great. Um, so if, uh, if I'm hearing this right, uh, the, the way that a student would get to participate in this program would be that they would be invited by, by us, by, by the division. So, uh, what if, what if not all the spots are filled? Uh, what if other families take a look at this and are interested in their children participating? Are there any options for that?
Dr. Kraft, principals have been, they're working on inviting students now. They know that each of the elementary K-4 schools have been allotted five teachers, and so that's 12 students in each of those five classrooms, so 60 students per K-4 school. Walker has been allotted seven teachers, so they'll have 12 in each of those for 84 students. Uh, of course, they're working hard to identify the students and fill those spaces. And as we know with COVID, uh, there, there, there might be more than those students, um, more than 12 per class, so they'll have certainly wait, waiting lists. And if those spaces aren't filled, then they can move right on down to the next students who are maybe not as needy as the ones on your initial top 12 for a class. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Wade?
No.
Okay. Um, I think some of my questions, so is there, I mean, we're hoping for that commitment, though, for the five weeks. Is there, uh, what if a family drops out, or is there an opportunity or a possibility, I guess, that a student, their needs might be met, and then, or are we hoping that they stay the full five weeks?
It is our hope that they stay the full five weeks. Um, last year, I believe, uh, we, we've extended the amount of time this year due to COVID. We've extended to five weeks instead of four. Uh, for K-4, we've extended a Walker and, uh, an extra week as well. And so our hope is that the students will. um, as well. And so our hope is that the students will remain for the entire five weeks. It really is, it's not just gonna be drilling kill, there's gonna be fun and enrichment in the second half of the day. Uh, so it is our goal to, um, entice children with, with the great opportunity of, of learning, focusing on literacy and math in the mornings, and then, uh, just great opportunities of enrichment in the afternoons and that full day on Friday. So it's very different. Uh, we just felt that, uh, we needed to do something different this year, um, after a year of, of COVID. And, and this opportunity, uh, landed before us. And we felt that it was just a, we had to jump with this, uh, for our K-six students. Initially, it was K-four, and we expanded to K-six. So we just really believe it's gonna be a great opportunity for families, and our goal is to, uh, to help families want their child to stay and help the children want to stay, uh, for the full five weeks.
Great, thank you. Um, and then I may have missed it, but is this grant-funded? And then is there, and also is there a charge to families for the, uh, hour before the camp starts and after?
There is no fee for families at all. Uh, the YMCA does fundraising, uh, to, to fund this program. So there's no fee for the students and no fee for our division, uh, which is a great bonus. Uh, we, we are very, um, honored to have this partnership with the YMCA for our students. And Ms., uh, Ms. Lainey, if there's anything else you'd like to add to that, uh, please feel free.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, I would just, I'd just highlight the, the fun part of it. Um, I think that, um, trying to entice these kids to come, um, and really, um, enjoy those weekly themes and, you know, Friday field trips and guest speakers and, and really kind of transform the space uh, to make it a, an exciting experience for kids. That's one of our goals. And, um, we have found some great funding partners to be able to provide the cost at no, no, um, no cost for kids. So our goal was really to help, um, remove barriers of cost, transportation, provide food. Um, so there's really just a lot of good initiatives that are coming with this program, and the Y does this across the country, uh, with local school districts. So there's a model that we're following.
Thank you, Ms. Masliny. And I, I'm glad you said that because I failed to mention that, uh, when we met with the YMCA and the BEL Excel representative, uh, they shared about the success in, in various different school divisions. And I spoke personally with, um, a superintendent in Lynchburg, and she shared her success with the program. So we're excited about what it's gonna do for our students here in Charlottesville.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions?
I just have one more, at least, uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, once the principals have, uh, selected the students, how will they be notified? Will both the parent and the student be notified that they will be participants in this, uh, great summer opportunity?
What we have is, um, the principals are going to be reaching out personally to families, but we also have a, the application process. Once the principal identifies the students, uh, they do have to complete the, the paperwork that the YMCA needs, um, to, just so that they can have documentation of the students that they are serving, uh, through the program. And the, and the schools will let them know, uh, that they are in the program and, and when it starts, which is when, um, all K-through six, June twenty-first, it begins.
So.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will the application process be, um, both online and paper version?
That's, that's exactly what I was about to say next. We do have both options for our families. Absolutely.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any, uh, questions about this, we could move on to the next part, I believe, with Dr. Turner.
Okay, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, board. At Buford, um, just to give you a little background knowledge, uh, at the beginning of the year, Ms. Delory, I, I wanna give her, um, I wanna recognize her. She had, uh, worked very hard with the Office of School Quality and the Equity Center at UVA. Uh, and, and a lot of this came out of some of the work that we've been doing, with Dr. Baptist and, um, trying to, uh, correct and improve our, uh, standardized test scores, our SOL scores. So we really tried to think outside of the box, uh, in terms of what we would offer. So, the Equity Center at UVA was, was, was right on board with us. And, um, at that point, we, we started crafting. And Ms. Delory did a lot of that work, uh, with the center. So, this year's summer school will offer experiences that focus on underscoring math and reading growth, while providing students an opportunity to explore academic interest through a socially-aware lens. Um, and I want to talk a little bit about that. At the, at, at, at the stage that our students are at right now, uh, in terms of their development, one of the things that we're trying to do, uh, I think if the pandemic hasn't taught us anything, it's, it's taught us the, the importance of engagement. And one of the things that we talked about was, how do we keep our children hooked? Expecting them to come to school in the summer for several weeks just to complete math questions or to read may not be a big enough hook. We would be, have to make it relevant, that the learning has to be relevant. So we, we're trying very hard to figure out ways to incorporate reading and math basically in the content areas. And, and to, uh, attach that level of instruction to real-life situations, to try to get our children hooked into learning a little bit more, especially since they're at uh, the cusp of getting ready to go into high school where everything counts. Uh, we want, we want them to be ready for that and, and to be ready to continue to learn. So our program runs from June twenty-first, uh, to July sixteenth, Monday through Friday, nine to one-thirty, are anticipating enrollment, eighty-four students. And, uh, as you've heard, uh, our pupil teacher ratio, twelve to one. The program will include visits to UVA, field trips, mentors. And again, our focus is academic, and we want our children to be ready for rigor. And Leslie, if you could, uh, move to the next slide. All right. So, so, so here's what a day, uh, will look like for some of the participants, for the participants. Okay. Obviously, uh, we want to feed them, uh, so that, that will be a nine, there'll be a morning meeting. And then, and then they'll break out into groups. And some of the activities are here, uh, reading and math, targeted work, academic interest. Uh, they will engage in architecture, medicine, law, education, commerce, science, and engineering. And the Equity Center will, will, will serve, uh, as guides and mentors. Teachers create the curriculum. And I want to speak a little bit on that. We, we will, in terms of the curriculum, we will rely somewhat heavily on Newzella and IXL. IXL has, has math and reading portions. Newzella takes real-life situations and, and, and makes them engaging. And again, uh, what's undergirding our work, uh, this year is, is, is pure engagement. We, we, we're trying to get children engaged to show them the connections between learning and opportunities that they can have, uh, as adults when it comes to employment and, and trying to, and trying to make that connection between school and the real world. And we're gonna have, uh, Ms. Deja, she will be there to help, uh, uh, with social justice artwork. And, and that will be basically their morning, they'll, they'll move into lunch. And then, um, uh, the second group, basically, we will swap, um, the times when, when they will be engaged in the activities. Okay? And I think, Leslie, that's the last, uh, slide for me. Are there any questions?
Dr. Turner, this is Mrs. Perier. You indicated that, um, I'm fine, how are you this evening? Uh, you indicated that the Equity Center would be acting as mentors. Will they be mentoring the students based on the various, um, subjects that you had listed above? Would they be mentoring and/or tutoring the children in academic subjects? Exactly how's that gonna work?
Yes, um, it would, it would, it would be a mix. It, the, the mentors will be a part of, they are studying in those areas. They're, they're in medicine, they're in commerce. Uh, and we're trying to match, uh, our students up with a mentor that, that, uh, makes sense in terms of, uh, what, what our students' interests are right now. And obviously, um, uh, one of the things that I do want to share, and, and, and this is not a secret, that, um, basically, our, our number-one struggling group, enrollment group at the school are, are black students. So, um, this particular program, Ms. Perier, is rooted in putting our children, those struggling children, in front of, uh, what we would consider excellent representatives and giving them a real-world opportunity to see, uh, what they can be when they, when, when, when they get to that age or when they become adults. We, we, again, this summer school program is, is, is heavily based on engagement and, and, and making learning relevant.
Well, thank you for that. Um, and I, um, asked you that question because, uh, those of us that are members of the local steering committee for the Equity Center were very, uh, impressed with the work that you and Dr. Allen have done, uh, with our students for the upcoming summer at Buford. And I wanted to, um, make sure that everyone was aware of that. And, um, we're excited about the opportunity. And thank you so much to both you and Dr. Allen, and that's Dr. Benjamin Allen, uh, who is our executive director of the UVA Equity Center. So we appreciate the two of you collaborating to bring these, um, mentors and this area of expertise to our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Any other questions for, for Dr. Turner, board members?
No, I have a question, Madam Chair, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Regardless, um, to the program, Dr. Turner, I think, um, it is a, you said you go with thinking outside the box. I think this is an excellent, um, summer enrichment program, based on, um, that it's, 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 it's relevant and, um, it will match these students up with, um, mentors to make it realistic um, and relevant. So I think, hopefully, the students will be excited about this great opportunity this summer. And I'm sure they're gonna have a good time, and, uh, I think it's great. So congratulations on, um, you and your team putting this program together for the students that are struggling, um, students at, at, um, Buford.
And, and Mr. B, if I could just add, I mean, and you know this because you've been at the high school level, uh, uh, and, and I'll be brief, but we wanted to have a laser focus on this enrollment group. And having had the opportunity to run two of the largest high schools in this area, what I've learned over the years is that every educator in a school division, whether they're kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, everyone should be concerned about high school graduation. And I'm not so sure that is always a focus. But, but the end goal to win the game for children is to graduate from high school. So, um, all of what we're doing, it's not about trying to, you know, make Buford look great or anything like that. We, we are focusing on trying to make sure that our children can win the big game. And that's high school graduation. And every educator in a K-through twelve school setting, that should be their focus. Even though they may be just teaching them how to add or subtract, the end game should be graduating. So, so we want to get, we want to have a laser focus on helping these children become engaged and, and hooked on school and learning and seeing the relevancy between learning and having a productive life as an adult. So thank you, because it's a lot of work that's been put into this.
Hmm, you're just basically continuing the foundation from elementary school.
Yes.
Keeping them engaged, and the end result is our students graduate from high school. That's extremely important. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, Dr. Turner, thank you. Thank you and your team, Seda and everybody else who had, who worked on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
All right, next.
Yes, I agree. Go ahead, Neely, sorry.
I was gonna say, at this point, we're turning it over to you, Dr. Irizarry, CHS principal.
Uh, greetings, everybody. Uh, I'll go over, uh, just an overview of, uh, our summer school program here at Charlottesville High School. So this year, um, again, we're gonna focus mainly on credit recovery and class completions, just making sure that some of the students that may have struggled this year have the opportunity to finish their classes and gain those credits towards graduation. Uh, we are going to attempt to run multiple sessions over the summer to increase the number of students served and to stay within the, um, the social distancing guidelines as well. Um, some students are, uh, by the end of the year will be closer to completing these classes. And we don't want to necessarily keep them the entire summer. If they can complete the class in, in two weeks or in, in three, we want to go ahead and have them complete those classes and enjoy their, their summertime. We will have walk services and, um, you know, Donna Poe and the Walk Team have been working hard, uh, all year long. But we are going to continue their services into the summer to make sure that we can, uh, assist our seniors in walking across the stage, if not in June, uh, later in the summer, uh, for graduation. We're gonna continue our social, emotional supports and mental health supports over the summer. We will have virtual options available, uh, for PE and health and econ, personal finance. And that's similar to what we do traditionally. And then we are, uh, looking at community-led partnerships as well after summer school to partner. So our, when our students finish here, uh, they can go on to some other community partner, uh, partnerships. And, um, you know, just have a complete summer. So that's kind of an overview of the high school. It's not gonna be dissimilar to what we, what, what, what we've done in the past. It's really just ensuring that our students can complete classes and work towards graduation.
Dr. I, is this invitation or is this, you know, or a, a combination of both? Like invitation to the kids that need, need to finish as far as the credit, um, recovery and then also open to, you know, next-year students for classes as well? Or is that something?
Oh, yeah, i- it will be primarily for stu-, an invite for students that have failed or have not completed their courses this year. We will have limited opportunities, um, for students to try to get ahead. Um, but those will be, the, those virtual options will be available. And usually, students take PE and health and econ, personal finance, um, not as credit recovery, but as of, as for a first time. And we will be offering those this year, but they will be offered in a virtual format.
Only?
At this point, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, board members, for Dr. I?
Yes, I have one. Dr. I, how many students are you expecting, anticipating this summer component?
Uh, I, I'll let you know here pretty soon, sir. It's, uh, it, you know, it's, it's, it's been an interesting year. Um, we have one nine weeks left, but I do anticipate, you know, possibly having, probably needing some, uh, additional seats more than we usually do, just depending on how students finish up this last quarter.
Okay, so this will be, the tenth and eleventh grades will be in the building, but the seniors at the Walk Lab, is that, is that how I'm seeing this?
There will be, uh, Walk and our senior classes will be face-to-face, so not every senior is in Walk. Um, so we will have summer school for, um, for our seniors as well. And our goal is to get the students that have, uh, not completed or have failed a class in, for face-to-face, so we can go ahead and finish out that year. So it'll be a combination, sir.
Okay, comments, okay. Thank you. Okay, comments, okay. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Lashandra.
Okay, I was just wondering, um, as far as the enrichment and the partnerships you were mentioning, are there opportunities, um. For, uh, jobs over the summer or internships or anything like that associated with the summer school, um, for the high school students?
Yeah, we have our traditional partners, uh, City Schoolwide Gardens usually partners with us over the summer. So, that's an aspect that we're looking to bring some community partners either to the building or students out into the community, um, to engage in. Um, either some work-based learning opportunities, uh, internships or just some enrichment opportunities as well. Um, you know, I always remind myself that our, our high school students are, are kids and sometimes they just need, um, some outlets, um, uh, other than school as well. So, we're gonna be working with our, uh, traditional partners and looking to expand those partnerships as well.
Yeah, and I had a question just about the, um, mental health supports. Um, I'm just wondering what those will look like and I know that we've talked a lot about, um. You know, some of our students really struggling with mental health issues. So, I'm wondering, will there be a particular process to identify students who need those supports? Uh, maybe just say a little bit about that.
Yeah, we'll be working with, uh, we have our partners in the building and when we come back April twelfth. Uh, Elk Hill and Region Ten are still our big partners in the building, as well as our clinical social workers. Those are eleventh month positions. So, those will be overlapped over the summer as well, along with our school counselors. So, that team will still be intact, uh, over the summer to provide those mental health supports, identify any students in critical care crisis. And then they will be continuing the supports of students that are already in the CTSS process and receiving, uh, those interventions as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. I.
If there are no other questions, we're going to let Jill Dahl take over.
Great, thank you. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and School Board members. Um, so this summer, similar to the high school, we will be. Um, focusing on, um, you know, students finishing their learning goals for the year. We refer to their, their grad plans and their program of study as learning goals. And so, um, that will be, um, majority of what we're focused on. Um, we are offering it to rising ninth grader, rising nine through twelve, current twelfth graders. Um, the rising ninth graders would be, uh, you know, our, our goal is any student that might be recommended to. Start at LM A in the fall, that they spend the summer with as a sort of a transition period. Um, but it's not, it's not a requirement, but it is, we are open to that. Um, so teachers will work with content teachers, um, we invite all of our students, um, everyone is invited. Um, whether they are behind in credits or have courses that need to be finished, um, just an opportunity to stay connected with them. Um, there, this year, what will be slightly different is the academic portion of the day will stop at one. And then from one to two, we'll focus on, um, you know, working on mindfulness and, um, FCL enriched activities. Um, we'll have small mentoring groups, wellness activities. We've partnered with, um. A local, uh, UVA grad student who is a certified Zumba instructor, so just focusing on opportunities for movement. Um, and, and just general overall wellness of students, the whole, the whole child. Um, and then just, um, continuing to build upon our inquiry design that we're using with students this year, which is showing. Some positive success.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Dahl, how many students do you anticipate attending? Do you know yet?
I hope all of them. Uh, we'll be having, um, individual meetings with families in April. Uh, the end of April to go over where they're at with their courses and how, showing them how. Attending summer school, what that'll do for their, you know, their plans, um, and just stress the importance of it. Um, I think we're currently with twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six students enrolled. Um, and we will invite them all. We have a couple seniors that need that extra time to, to finish up. So, we just wanna make sure we get them in and engaged and, um, give them that opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? No, okay. Thank you very much.
Let's, uh, thank you. Um, so in addition to the programs we've just described. Um, I'm excited to let you know that UVA's Center for Race and Public Education in the South. Um, will be offering Freedom School for the second year in a row. Um, this program, you may remember from an earlier presentation, um, at the very beginning of this year. This program's being planned by Dr. Derek Allridge and Dr. Jahari Harris from. Uh, UVA Center for Race and Public Education in the South. I think in August twenty twenty, you heard from Dr. Harris and Ms. Kristen Edwards. Who described how they ran Freedom School during the summer of twenty twenty. This year, we're happy to announce that we've expanded our Freedom School offering. Um, last year. This opportunity was offered to rising third through rising fifth graders. This year in twenty twenty-one, this summer. We'll be offering the program to rising third through rising eighth graders. So, we've added quite a bit of, um. Grade levels to the offering for Freedom School. Um, this program, um, again, offers families some options. Um, it's primarily virtual, uh, but it, we're considering it hybrid. It will run June twenty-first through July twenty-third from nine AM to three PM. Um, with optional outdoor experiences on Wednesdays and Fridays. So, that's where the hybrid piece comes in. Um, there's room for sixty Charlottesville City Schools students out of the hundred total that they're offering Freedom School to this year. Um, similar to last year's program, this year's program will merge high-quality literacy instruction with high-quality social studies. And civics instruction, um, through a social justice lens. Students will be admitted through an application process and the Freedom School program will prioritize students with literacy needs. Who have not been invited and not accepted invitation to Power Scholars. And again. This program also is free for families, just like Power Scholars, no cost to families. Any questions about Freedom School?
I don't have a question. I'm just excited that we can offer this again. I'm thrilled about that.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of options for our students, um, this summer. It's a great program this year. I'm glad we're doing it.
I'm also excited about it. We had great feedback from it last year, so we're very excited about it. So, at this point. Uh, if there are no other questions, I would like to turn it over to Vic Garber, who is the Deputy, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you.
And as, as Mr. Garber is, is coming on, I did see him here earlier. I think he's here. Um, he's gonna be sharing with you some camp opportunities, um, as we said earlier, because, uh, we know that. We have many families who are, who their students may not be invited to Power Scholars. Uh, but these opportunities will be available to them, uh, for the full day as well. There he is, Mr. Garber.
Yes, uh, my mic was muted, so my apologies. Okay, I wanna thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins and, and Dr. Odie. Uh, it is a pleasure to be here before you once again, uh, to provide an overview of the summer day camp, uh, provided by Parks and Recreation. Our goal is to provide enriching and engaging activities, uh, creating memorable experiences that improve the physical, social. And mental wellbeing being for our students not enrolled in summer school as well as non-city youth. And als- and to also provide needed childcare for the area families. Due to COVID this year, camp will look quite different than any other year. I believe we've worked with, uh, the school system since two thousand and six. This is a different year, uh, with safety for our participants and staff being a priority. Uh, staff will provide a unique, high-quality experience while following best practices, policies and guidelines developed by the CDC. Uh, Virginia Department of Health and certainly Charlottesville City Schools, which we will be provide, uh, following. Uh, first day of camp, uh, will be June the twenty-first and we will offer six one-week sessions. Um, of camp running from seven thirty in the morning until five thirty in the evening. Uh, Monday through Friday. Registration for city residents, uh, will begin April the twelfth. Um, and registration for non-city residents will begin May the tenth. School sites include, um, Clark, Greenbrier and Jackson via elementary schools. Uh, for what we call Camp Shenandoah or Rising First through Fourth Graders. Uh, we will have four classrooms in each one of the three elementary schools, uh, with twelve campers per room. Uh, we'll take a total of forty-eight campers, uh, per location per week and we will have one counselor. Uh, per, yeah, one counselor per six campers, so one to six ratio. Uh, we wanted that to be high because, um, I'll, I'll be honest, um, we, we're not, we're not sure what this is gonna be like. Uh, and we wanna put safety first, so we want to ramp up the ratio considerably. Uh, camp at, uh, Camp Blue Ridge, uh, or the Rising Fifth and Sixth Graders will be at Walker. Uh, we will be able to offer, um, campers, uh, ten classrooms and we will be able to take up to a hundred, uh, campers. Um, the price is not free, uh, but it is very low. Uh, fifty-five dollars for a city resident and seventy-five dollars for a non-city resident. We offer scholarships on a sliding scale. Uh, we offer anywhere from twenty-five percent to ninety percent off, uh, as a reduction based on gross income. And we work closely with social services in providing those scholarships. About fifty percent of our participants and sometimes more, uh, from the city do receive a reduction. Uh, we offer a nutritious meal and lunch, um, are provided through the USDA Summer Food, uh, Program. Uh, Parks and Recreation staff will oversee the distrib- distribution of meals, which the city schools prepares. Our staff will also manage the food service program for summer school and Power Scholars, which you've heard from this evening. Uh, we will also provide breakfast and lunch for the Boys and Girls Club at Beaufort Middle School. Um, an additional goal of the program is to provide, provide a strong inclusive program for all children. Um, one of our camp counselors, uh, each camp will be an inclusion counselor with experience and training and working with those youth with special needs. Our goal is to create a supportive environment for children that need a little extra assistance. Each inclusion counselor will support and encourage children with special needs and share strategies for other staff. So, they can better accommodate the child's needs. Uh, basically, let's see, transportation, transportation is provided to and from camp for city residents only. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing that with, uh, Dr. Odie and Kim Powell. And, uh, we hope to have that nailed down probably soon. Okay, next slide. All right, um, so I'll take you through a, a general day. We do have, um, like I said, it is going to be six weeks. Uh, we have weekly thing, weekly themes. Uh, around the world, activities focused on different countries and international cultures, amazing animals, focus on wildlife pets. Uh, visits from Wild Rock and the SPCA, uh, super science, um, offers. We'll be offering quite a few STEM programs, STEAM programs, uh, and what we call mad science. Uh, let it grow, uh, have fun with plants, flowers, seeds, gardening, food, cooking. Uh, visit for master gar- master gardeners, uh, tree commission, that kind of thing. Uh, imagination, adventures, stories and storybook characters and superheroes. And, um, water wonders. We hope to have, uh, transportation to and from our pools by then. So, I'm really hoping that, um, the kids get experience in water play, water experiments. And possibly a field trip to the river. So, what a day looks like at, um, the Parks and Recreation camps using the schools. Uh, seven thirty to nine AM, uh, the kids will arrive, uh, either by bus or a, a parent will bring them. The parent cannot leave until after they've gone through the COVID testing, the temperature checks, the COVID questions. They will go to their home room. There will be free time from seven thirty to nine. At nine o'clock, one of our assistant directors will go to the cafeteria, pick up a tote bag of the twelve lunches. For this particular room, group one, group two, group three and group four are specific rooms. That we have, uh, let's say at Greenbrier, they will have breakfast and cleanup from nine thirty, nine to nine thirty. Nine thirty to four forty-five, there'll be a morning meeting to review what's gonna happen, what kind of excitement are we gonna have today? What kind of enriching activities? And then they will go into an arts and crafts program. Depending on the theme, it will normally, uh, coincide with the theme. Nature time. Uh, we, we were lucky enough a couple of years ago to bringing in a specialist in outdoor method, education methodologies. So, she's really focused on, um, uh, the, basically. In this situation, they're gonna learn every tree in the school area, the animals that live in the trees, the animals that live in the park, the plants. Um, uh, interpretive services and that kind of thing. They will have lunch similar to breakfast. Enrichment activity, uh, normally the Richmond activity will bring in a special guest depending on the theme. Uh, outdoor play, uh, will either be certainly outdoors or in the playground, et cetera. Again, and the themed activity, uh, will be, of course, focused e- either around, uh, around the world, amazing animals depending. And then the last hour and a half will be free play. Uh, mom or dad can pick up their child at four o'clock. Or they're welcome to stay till five thirty, or they may be going home on the bus at that time. Um, let's see what I've missed. Um, oh, yes, uh, one more thing. Uh, to ensure a timely reopening, uh, since we are going a week, uh, we normally have six weeks. But I know that's been tough for the schools, uh, in preparing for, uh, to get those teachers back, uh, about mid-August. So, we're gonna provide staff at least one to two counselors to stay on after, uh, July thirtieth to assist the janitors. To prepare for, um, the teacher's return, move those furniture, clean the trash, sweep the floor. Uh, whatever needs to be done for that two-week period, uh, we're glad to help out. Uh, it's certainly needed. And finally, uh, in closing, I want to again thank the Charlottesville City Schools, uh, for their invaluable partnership in being the needs of the community. So, um, with that, I'll answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions, board members?
I have a quick question, just to follow up. The fifty-five dollars, is that per week?
That is per week, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, since city residents have the first month to register, they can pick and choose what weeks they would like to attend. Or they can attend all six if that's what they choose, uh, but scholarships will be available.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Garber, you may have said it and I may just have missed it. Um, for the people that can't afford the fifty-five dollars per week, how are we going to address that?
Yes, uh, we have a very strong scholarship program, um, that, um, uh, some of, some of our participants. Uh, receive as much as ninety percent off per week depending on their gross income in working with social ser- services. So, um, um, most of those children are in our system now. We know immediately what percentage they'll make, but we also work with their gross income and their W two form and the, and, and social services.
Sounds like you've, you've just put together a great summer program. So, thank you so much for that. I think it's a wonderful partnership. And what a wonderful summer for kids who have been dealing with the pandemic all year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? One queue.
Madam, Madam Chair, um, we had, um, Dr. Iraziri present about the high school. Do we think our school board rep may have some comments or questions? Do we think our school board rep may have some comments or questions?
He may, and I was gonna, I also had a question of Dr. Iris Ari or for anybody. You might be able to answer it, but Mr. Johnson, yes, if you have any questions regarding the presentation, we'd be happy to take those.
Yes, I'm sorry. Please allow me to get myself together for a second. When it comes, so my questions have to be directed towards the presentation that Dr. I gave earlier. Is that what we're aiming for, for me to ask a question based on earlier?
Or, or any of the summer school, yeah, options that were presented here right now?
Okay, summers, well, I do have some comments I really did enjoy. And loved everything that was presented today by Dr. I and please excuse me because I'm not sure what the last presenting name was, but I very much enjoyed those presentations and what they brought for summer schools. I really think the kids who apply for that will very much enjoy what is in store for them.
Thank you. Dr. I, are you still here?
I am.
I have a question for you or for somebody who might help my brain. And, and you know, looking at what we're offering for high school students understandably to, to support. You know, the kids who need this here, working towards graduation and then our normal health and PE, we, we had offered and the econ finance, we had offered other classes during the summer pre COVID. Is that correct?
For, for, for first time, for first time?
Or just any other course offerings besides what we're, we're offering this summer?
That has normally been our, our traditional for our classes first time is usually econ, personal finance, health and PE are our normal first time go throughs, first time class offerings during summer school.
Okay. There was a program and this is what I, my memory, I was trying to rack my brain that it was a collaboration with the community and other partners and our high school students. I don't think it was limited to just high school, but I believe working age could apply for interns or jobs.
Yeah, and I'll stop. One of my APs texted me and said, you forgot to mention KIP and I totally forgot. So we are working with KIP this summer as well. I apologize for not talking about that, especially.
Could you, could you give a little blurb about that? Because I think it's important that, you know, above and beyond what we're, what we're offering here in the school, that that's a great opportunity for our students to, to, you know, work or, or you know, again, I think there was an offering to work on a library or, or the city school yard garden. So if you could share that, that would be awesome.
Yeah, KIP is Community Attention Youth Internships. And it's an opportunity for students that are aged fourteen to, I think, twenty one to apply for internships. And that's a partnership with our city. And that includes, like you're saying, Ms. Torres, that could be an internship here at the school. It can be in the library. It could be in city hall. It could be with some of our, our nonprofits in the area as well, too. So that application will be going out to all of our high school, all of our high school students through Canvas. And we usually send that out through robocall as well for our parents that are interested. So that will be going out soon. Leslie Thacker just put the link to the internship link right there in the chat.
I saw something pop up. Thank you so much. Yeah, and if we could get that blasted out, because I mean, those, my understanding is those are paid internships. And a lot of times, you know, workout for kids to then maintain that job, you know, throughout the school year if it works out, but I think it's a great opportunity above and beyond. You know, the, the more standard academics that gives them something to do and look forward to in the summer.
And get paid.
Yeah. Yeah, awesome. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Iris Ari, I have a question if I may. Credit recovery is so important and our students have been through so much this year. What are we trying to do? I understand graduation. I've got it. I understand graduation rate. I've got that. But you are very high energy and a lot of your staff is high energy. What are we doing with our students this summer at the high school to replicate that energy? Are we using mentors? Are the things that we're reading in our various subjects? In our various course subjects that the students are doing are things that may be of interest, even if they're not quote unquote on a particular reading list. Still bring about the skills that we're trying to glean in social studies, history, whatever the subjects are, because I'm concerned because you have expressed that concern. Dr. Turner expressed that concern of the students that may or may not have been as present during this whole virtual environment. What are we doing to help them become present? Or the things that you feel the students are engaged, but maybe need a little extra push or nudge or whatever. What is it that we're doing to kind of have it out there? It's one thing to have it out there and they not take advantage of it. It's another thing for us to be grappling with what we need to do to put it there.
Yeah, I think one of the strengths of Charlottesville High School has been the relationships with students. And I think what COVID has shown us is that with, you know, when, when we are separated from our students, it's very difficult to build those relationships. It's, you know, when you don't have that person to person, you know, interactions live and face to face, that, that's difficult. And, you know, I understand we're going to have some students still virtual and we're doing the best we can to make sure that we're keeping everything engaged, but it really, we, we have, we have some of the best teachers in the state of Virginia and they're working so hard on those engagement pieces, you know, we're, we're in the classrooms, we're looking at the lessons and, and, and they're doing their best to connect them to, you know, making them relevant, making our lessons relevant. And we're hoping that with our students, a majority of our students coming back on April 12th. Getting those connections, making sure that we pick up, you know, really meet those students where they are this last nine weeks. And if students don't make it across the finish line, just saying, hey, we've got, you know, we, we've got some extensions here. Come on back this summer. We're going to make it fun. You know, we're not going to have students start over, you know, the class is over when they get here this summer. Again, this summer, they're going to pick up where they are and hopefully get them to that finish line. So it's not going to be that daunting. Hey, I didn't, I didn't complete this class. I've got to start from, you know, one to go to 10. We're going to say, all right, where did you end up? All right, you're on seven. Let's go ahead. You got to go from seven to 10. You know, come in, we'll have some fun in, in, in the, in the building. You'll have some of your best teachers here. Let's get, let's get done and then, you know, enjoy your summer. But at the end of the day for the high school, it is about recovering those credits because at the end of the day, they can't graduate without those credits. So it's going to be a combination of just bringing them into the building, making the lessons engaging and, you know, building those relationships back up, especially for our seniors and some of our students who have really missed that connection.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that you'll be able to do it. And the question was not to put you or your staff on the spot, but to let all of those people that are around the Zoom and the people that are listening. Knowing the good work that we're doing. We always talk about a lot of things, but one of the things that I am constantly feeling we need to do is tout our good work. And so the people out there in the Zoom land and Facebook Live or wherever they may be, need to know that there's a lot of good work being done. And I don't know how all of the instructors in the school division do what they do. Because it is just simply amazing.
So Madam Chair, before we move on, I would just ask Dr. I if he could remind the students that the deadline for the KIP application is next Tuesday or Wednesday, April the 7th. So maybe if you could put a reminder out tomorrow or somehow to, is something they can work on part of their holiday if they're interested.
We'll get that out.
It's a great program.
It is, thank you. Ms. McKeever, did you have one more question or comment?
Sorry, I wanted to say two things. One is, first of all, the virtual personal and economic finance in the summer sounds overwhelming and difficult and I would love it. Like I just think it would be amazing if we could have a, an in-person option for that in the summer. I think that is in terms of credit recovery, an easy one. And I think a lot of students who are taking it just get overwhelmed and very easy, but it's, it's a lot of work. As somebody who has stood over my child's shoulder to try to do that. So I just, I think an in-person option, just providing that accountability in person would go a long way to supporting students, especially the 10th grader who's going into 11th grade, who may not have been in school at CHS for very long. Anyway, that's just my limited observation and, you know, just whatever humble suggestion. Further, I just wanted to say the Y also has camps this summer, so it's not in our schools. But I, I feel like because they are here and they're such good partners and they they have been such good partners to us over the past, especially two years. That I think the parks department and the Y both provide this really, you know, affordable, both provide affordable camp experiences for our students for which I'm eternally grateful. And certainly have placed my children in both of the camps and I'm grateful that we've had the choices. So I, you know, huge fan of both the Y and our parks and I, I hope that parents will soon, will, will register their students as soon as possible. So as enough people can be hired to support the number of students that need the childcare in the summer, which is critical. So that's all the comments I have right now.
Great comments, Ms. McKeever. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, if, if I may, I just want to take an opportunity to thank our team. We have a small old team that's been working on organizing summer school. Neely's been leading the way there and I appreciate it. And then all of the principals and, and our partners. I am very excited about the opportunities that we have for our students this summer. They deserve just a great, robust and enriching opportunity. And I believe that that's what we have prepared for them. So we're ready and it's going to be a great summer. Thank you to everybody who took part in helping to arrange it.
Thank you, and I agree. I mean, and a lot of opportunities and options here, so I'm hoping that with all the work that you all put into this, that we, we have all of these options blasted out to parents so that they know that they are available. So thank you again. And thank you for all of the panelists that have shown up. Thank you for your time. And if there are no more questions about that, we will move on. Thank you, everybody. Neely, thank you. And we can move on to our fall school opening. Dr. Odie.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's, if you would present the slideshow. All right. Well, good evening again. We have begun thinking about how the reopening process this fall might look here in Charlottesville City Schools. We certainly have had a smooth transition to in-person instruction thus far this spring. And we anticipate that with proper planning, we will have as smooth of an opening in the fall. And so on this slide, you will see that we are, I've got a little outline for you of how this presentation will go tonight and overview. I'll start by setting the stage and then I'll share the current legislation that we're following. We'll look at considerations for virtual instruction and, and then we'll talk about next steps. Next slide, please. So here's what we know. We plan to be in person five days a week with a full day of instruction for all grade levels following the approved 2021, 2022 school calendar. We do need to ensure that we are meeting the 180 day, 990 hour requirement as set forth by the state. And we will be able to do that by coming in person each day. Now, Virtual Virginia will be available also for interested K through 12 students. As a program of the Virginia Department of Education, Virtual Virginia offers online advanced placement, world language, core academic and elective courses to students throughout the Commonwealth and nation. Currently, several Charlottesville High School students take advantage of Virtual Virginia. And this has been in place for many years at CHS. And now we will explore meeting any and all virtual needs using the Virtual Virginia platform as our main virtual option.
Dr. Odie?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I really have had this question for a while. How does the Virtual Virginia enrollment affect our ADM?
It won't affect our ADM because the students would be enrolled with us here in Charlottesville City Schools. There is a fee that we pay as a school system. The families wouldn't pay that. We pay that, but we get our normal ADM for the students. So it would not be effective, us negatively at all. Did I answer your question?
I'm so sorry. Yes, you did. And that was very helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I was just saying that Charlotte, several students in Charlottesville High School have taken advantage of Virtual Virginia. And it's been in place for many years there. And now we'll explore meeting all of our virtual needs using the Virtual Virginia platform as our main virtual option. We'll also explore some Charlottesville City Schools virtual learning as an option for some students. Our goal, however, is to have students return safely to in-person learning in 21, 22. Next slide, please. What we don't know quite yet, and I emphasize yet, is what the virtual model in the event that there are parents who want to have their students continue with virtual instruction will look like. It's still very early in our planning process and we still need time to work through this. We will need to determine which parents will want to have their students remain virtual. The next slide, though, will show some virtual exploration options that we'll look at. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, Charlottesville High School has already had some students take advantage of Virtual Virginia courses. This will continue to be an option, our main virtual option. We may also explore using CHS teachers for some virtual instruction as needed. At this time, we're looking at utilizing Virtual Virginia for any K through eight students whose parents prefer to continue with virtual instruction next year. And on the next slide, you'll see the legislation that we're following regarding instructional modalities for 21, 22. Senate Bill 1303 requires all school divisions to offer in-person learning consistent with public health guidelines in accordance with the constitutional authority of school divisions and while prioritizing the safety of students, teachers and staff. And it states that school divisions may offer virtual instruction. As you can see, virtual instruction is not a requirement. But in the event that virtual instruction is offered, students who are not successful with that modality will need to transition back to in-person learning. As I mentioned earlier, and as you heard from several students in the March meeting, virtual learning did not quite work for everyone. And, and this bill that had been introduced, Governor Northern did sign it late last night. So we will, we've been waiting to see what his response would be. And once we found that out, we will follow this legislation as we move forward with planning. And the next slide really highlights things we need to consider when looking at virtual options. The first three bullets truly go together. Synchronous time would need to increase. Thus, screen time would increase because for 2021, 2022, asynchronous learning will not count towards the required mandated 990 hours for school divisions. This year, this current year, Virginia school divisions have been operating under a waiver that allowed asynchronous time to count towards the required 180 days and 990 hours. That waiver is expiring. And so that is not the case for next year. Another consideration is having a possible application process for virtual learning. Again, it worked well, virtual learning worked well for some this year. So that could be something we look So that could be something we look at in an application process if we went that route. And we also need to really spend more time thinking about logistics, specifically staffing. Will Virtual Virginia or CCS virtual learning be more feasible? With Virtual Virginia, teachers are provided through the, through the DOE, through the Virginia Department of Education. With CCS virtual learning, we would need to determine how that would work best for our students and staff. And make sure that we're meeting that 180 days and 990 hours. Next slide, please. As you've heard, we still do have lots of planning for 2021, 2022. As I stated, we do plan to return five days a week, full days, to in-person instruction safely. But the virtual option requires more preparation. In the meantime, we will stay up to date with legislation and governor's mandates. We will continue to monitor CDC, VDH and VDOE guidelines. And we really want to spend some time reflecting on what went really well this year because there were lots of things that went well. And as well as what areas needed, need um, enhancement in it. We certainly want to use what we have learned from this year as we move forward. But our main focus overall will be to prepare for a safe return to learning for students and staff. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. Uh, these are the areas that I've covered today, and at this time, I'm happy to receive questions.
So um, Madam Chair has had kind of a, a comment and uh, we can get a confirmation from Dr. Odie that we are planning to have the students back in person, face-to-face um, next school year. That, that is the plan. And I know that you, you spent time talking about the virtual because that's could be an option. And, and some people really um, like that and we, and that may be an option next year. Uh, I just want to make it clear to the, to the families out there that that's, you know, we're not planning for that to be the norm next school year, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. I, I mentioned it because in case we have families who uh, request virtual, we want to be ready for that. But absolutely, our plan is all students to come back face-to-face, five days a week, all day.
All right.
I'm sorry, can I have a quick question?
Yeah, hold on. Lashandra, if you don't mind. So Mr. Wade, do you have any other questions? Okay, Lashandra, go ahead.
Uh, just to follow up on that question. So we're considering some virtual options? Or I just got confused on the last question. Are we considering some virtual options or we're just talking about it now? I, I'm just confused. Will there be a virtual option even when kids are back five days a week?
The virtual option, the main virtual, if, if a parent um, absolutely feels that their child needs to remain virtual, we are exploring Virtual Virginia as our option uh, for students.
And uh, the last question, for the back to school in the fall, is that now, right now, as you see it incorporating all of the current mitigation measures? With the mask and the distancing and uh, transportation and all that?
Yes, we'll continue to monitor uh, CDC guidelines to make sure that we are keeping um, with the mitigation strategies and all expectations uh, so that we can keep students and staff safe.
But right now, it would be, we're saying that it would be the same as it is currently, like wearing mask. There's no, you don't anticipate that changing other than VDOE or the CDC updating the guidelines?
I, I don't anticipate that changing. Dr. Baptist, I don't know if you know anything else about any new guidance, but the, the guidance we're following right now, um, if, if this were the guidance in the fall, that's what we will be following.
What I continue to hear is that we will still be wearing masks probably into 2022. And we know that even though some of the um, vaccine companies are saying that they will have vaccine ready for students, hopefully this summer, we know that all of our students will not be vaccinated until the fall or even the winter. So I think we will be wearing this and who knows, by that time, we as adults may need a booster. So I, I anticipate that we'll be doing this continuing, at least through the fall.
Dr. Baptist, we'll probably have to look at uh, the three-foot distancing though, to get everybody back in the building, correct? Or, or more people back in the building.
We'll have to look at that and you kind of see what's happening with our numbers. But um, yes, I, we wouldn't be able to do exactly what we want to do if we kept it at six feet, I don't think.
Uh, that was my question where I was trying to come back to as well, is that right now, we're not at full capacity in all the buildings. So if everyone returns five days a week, will, like, are you anticipating like challenges with space and things like that?
I think the answer to that is probably, but as Dr. Odie has said, we've got a lot of planning to do and want to see, you know, where we are. We will definitely follow whatever the CDC and Blue Ridge Health District uh, says for us. But um, we will do everything we can to get the uh, schools open because we have the mandate to get the schools open. So we're gonna do what we need to do, people, we may be using some spaces differently than we've used in the past. Some larger spaces may have to be used differently. But um, we're gonna do everything we can to get the kids back in safely and educationally.
Um, Madam Chair, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, Dr. Odie, I wanted to um, focus a little bit on the fine arts programs, you know, which have, you know, mostly been curtailed this year. Um, and I'm wondering um, for the families out there, will we be able to um, will, will, will the students be able to participate in, in the fine arts and the fine and performing arts programs next year? Are we anticipating those programs being perhaps not 100% the way they were, but, but so in, you know, some kind of meaningful uh, opportunities for students to participate?
It, it is certainly my hope uh, that we would be able to uh, return to some uh, level of, of participation and normalcy with our fine arts. We will follow CDC guidelines, so uh, and, and just listen to what um, they offer as options to bring children together to perform safely. How, how many people can be in the area, what, who can be in the audience? And we, we just have to focus on uh, following those guidelines and keeping kids and families safe and staff.
Um, and just related to that, when, when we are considering um, athletic activities at schools, are we following, are, are there different guidelines that are set for those activities than for something like um, you know, an orchestra or a band to perform?
There, the, the guidelines that we follow from the VHSL uh, are what we have for the sporting events in the CDC as well.
The governor's orders have also outlined the different numbers for, for different activities. And I know there's been concerns about how certain groups can have some numbers and some can't. We're following the governor's orders. Uh, we would love to have all of our groups to be able to do everything and get life back to where we can enjoy it all. But we're paying attention and following the, the orders. And uh, Dr. Atkins and I had a conversation about this one day this week. And, you know, we would like to see us expand, but at this point, and with our numbers kind of where we are right now, we feel like we need to stay with what we're doing. But hopefully, we'll be back to more of it next year.
But Dr. Baptist, we're, we're actually doing, we're playing lacrosse and other athletics outside.
Yes.
In my, in my, I mean, I understand that VHSL has special dispensation of some sort um, that is apparently not transferring over to fine arts. But this is, seems arbitrary and capricious, especially for outdoor performances. And you need, I'm sorry, thank you. And I think it has to stop immediately. These children who have spent their whole lives in our fine arts department are graduating this year or having culminating events, this can't have, can't perform. And in my opinion, that, this is an equity issue. We have, you know, that they don't even have access to their programs, uh, they can't perform. And I, I just think we need to resolve this sooner rather than later. These events can happen safely outdoors. Everything says that. And it's, it's just mind-boggling that we can have wrestling and ba- basketball and swimming and sports, which I want everybody to have a, all access to this. This is not asking for everything to go back to normal. We're asking for it to happen safely, but it can possibly happen safely. So I'm not sure I understand why this is, this arbitrary decision seems to be happening.
Is that this, it's at the state level through the government orders. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to be capricious, arbitrary and capricious locally. We're following the, what we have. And you have to look at the size of um, spaces and the numbers of people. And they have said that we can have larger numbers for graduation. And we're trying to maintain everything that we're doing so that we will be able to have a graduation um, for the students. But you know, if, if the governor's orders change, we will be glad to, to work on that. So this may be a, a conversation that we need to have with our representatives to carry to the governor's office.
Can't we find a way to make this happen within what the government, governor allows? I mean, you've asked the fine arts department to create plans all along. Can't they make a plan that would fit the government outline?
I think it could be possible. I can't say for sure until we've seen the plan. But we will want to make sure that we're doing everything based on the, the guidance. Even your CDC still is not recommending some of the sports now. Are they re- uh, recommending some of the fine arts types of things? If it, the government's uh, executive orders say that we can do these various activities, we'd be glad to do them. But again, I think it's, it's got to come out of the governor's officer at the state level. It's not just Charlottesville saying no to these things. It is across the state.
And, and I'll just add, you know, I know it's not ideal. I, I am a lover of fine arts and, and, and I would love to be able to see these performances in person. The, the good news is uh, our students have been able to uh, share their skills and their um, just what they're able to do in, in virtual performances. I've attended several of them and they've been not what we're used to seeing, certainly. But they've been amazing um, in, in lieu of what they could do in person.
Would we be able to um, uh, receive a link or some information about the guidelines, the state guidelines that do govern these activities, just to be able to understand them better?
We can get you copies of the governor's orders, but really the governor's executive orders, they're not guidelines. They're executive orders.
Orders.
So it's not much.
Yeah, like if there are orders that pertain to uh, you know, like music performances or something like that, it would be helpful to know what they are. Because it does feel, I, I would agree with Ms. McKeever, that it, it really feels um, you know, arbitrary in a way when you compare it to the athletics and what's been allowed to happen there. I, I really truly don't understand uh, the difference.
The, the latest orders became effective today. So I will make sure, I'll get copies of those sent to you. And Ms. McKeever, I was a music major in undergraduate, so not having the fine arts is killing me too. Um, so.
Can I just respectfully just add that, like, honestly, my child, because he's uh, got re- access to resources, he gets to have recital, he gets to have all of these great things. Because, you know, this is a culmination. He's been doing this for eight years. This is not a joke. He's graduating. He ha- he gets to have a cul- culminating recital. I, he, it's fine. My concern is for those children who do not have access to these resources, who will not be able to have any final um, you know, uh, performance or uh, that, that will actually demonstrate their abilities. Like I, I appreciate that everybody here says that this is what they want. Um, but we gotta fight to make it happen if we can't make it happen under the way, the way it is. And, you know, this elected political body certainly is a great resource to effect that change. Um, so I, I don't like sitting on my heel saying, hey, you know, this is what they're saying. Well, you know, also bars and restaurants are open. Why can't my, you know, our children who need access to these resources be able to perform um, in our public schools? Like we've promised them for eight years. Um, so anyway, I appreciate everybody's, I just think that if we need help advocating on the state level, this elected body can help.
I absolutely agree with the equity issues and everything that you said.
Thank you both. Thank you all.
Madam Chair.
You can go ahead, Leah.
Hold on, let me see. Dr. Kraft, are you done with questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Perrier.
Um, Dr. Odie.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation for fall um, learning. I would just like to say, I appreciate you using the words may or possibly, etc. That this is not etched in stone. But I think knowing our community, the way I know our community, we need to continue to use the may's or the possibles or the possibilities. And we need to make certain that everyone understands if you do A, this is what it means. If you do B, this is the consequence. Because it's so easy for everyone to say, oh, well, I thought if I did A, I could do A and B. And there may not be an A or B alternative, if you understand what I'm saying. And I think people need to be aware of what Virtual Virginia is and what Virtual Virginia does. And Virtual Virginia may not be what the Charlottesville City School Division has developed for their virtual program. So I just want us to be mindful of that and be cautious of the steps that we take. Yes, schools have to be open. We got it. We heard it. We read it. But actually, what does that mean going forward? So it's like, you know, step by step by step. I know it's gonna be repetitive. I know it's gonna be redundant. I know you're gonna say it once, you're gonna say it twice, you're gonna say it three times. And you might be able to say it in your sleep with your eyes closed. But we need to understand what's going on every step of the way because we are in the Charlottesville City School Division. And we are informed consumers and we want to know. And the wanting to know may be transparent sometimes. There may be things that happen behind the scenes that we find out about later. But as long as people are a part of the process and feel that they understand what is happening during the process, I think we, as a community, will avoid um, unnecessary pitfalls. So I appreciate you bringing this forward this evening so that we all can begin to think about the process. Nothing is etched in stone, but we are beginning the process. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. We will absolutely uh, keep the community and bring this, our, our updates to the board as we move forward through the rest of the year, as we're planning for next year. Thank you.
Lashandra?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to go back um, kind of a little bit of what Leah said. But as a starting place, I understand that the governor has said five days a week back. Um, but during COVID, we learned a lot about virtual and what worked and what didn't work. And I don't think we should take it off the table and just default to the Virtual Virginia. Um, because there are going to be families. You know, we don't know where we're gonna be. And I feel like when COVID came, we were unprepared and we're doing our best. We're always like putting out a fire. And it would be nice this time around to, you know, look at all the options and be ready. And I just know there are going to be families who will prefer virtual, if we're still wearing masks, if they're still, uh, they're not able to vaccinate their children, what our numbers look like, what booster shots are looking like. And so I don't want us to start off just defaulting to the Virtual Virginia. I would like us starting from a. I would like us starting from a place of saying, we will look at virtual and in person, depending on what the community wants and what we need.
Thank you, Ms. Bryson Morrisberger. I just, also just want to remind everybody about the 180 days and the 990 hours that are required. And so uh this year, we had lots of asynchronous learning built into our schedule. And we won't be able to have that next year. So in order for, for us to meet that mandate, uh, we'll need to come in. So we're, we're, we're still early, we're still in the beginning stages, but we're also thinking about that waiver that is expiring this year. And uh we must uh meet that 180 and 190 hours. And we're thinking of how we can do that. And asynchronous is not going to be part of that um equation. So uh that's where we are right now. Uh, still in the beginning, planning stages. Uh, we'll continue to explore and, and look at what next year might look like. Uh, we'll bring updates to you and uh again, continue to uh review any new legislation or governor mandates. But we do have to follow whatever the state or governor does tell us that we need to do.
This is my last follow up question. Um, and I know we're in the beginning stages, but we're assuming we'll still be under similar COVID restrictions. If there's an exposure or quarantine, are those students going to be then sent to virtual? BA, are they still gonna be figuring out a way to work with their teachers? I guess what I'm trying to say, I just would really like to find a way to keep the elements of virtual that worked and provide people with an option. And I have no idea what virtual, virtual BA is, um, in the little bit I've heard about it. Uh, there, I ha- I haven't heard amazing things about it, so I just don't, so that option seems foreign to me.
And very good question. And again, uh, we haven't really found all of the answers yet. Uh, we're still early in our planning, but there will likely be times when a child has to quarantine. Right now, if a child has to quarantine, uh, we want them to not miss instruction. If they're well enough to continue with instruction, we want them to join a virtual class or to uh receive a packet of information. So we'll look at, again, we'll look and see what worked well this year and what we can move into next year as we um start a, a new journey and what instruction is gonna look like for our students.
Mr. Bryant, did you have any questions or comments?
Um, I got, I agree with every, everything the board members said in regards to um, you know, starting the process of, of planning for next year, but the virtual part just sort of um, I guess my concern would be in looking at a virtual model. We know, like Juan said, we'll make sure that everybody understands that we're, we're working toward face to face. And, but have that virtual model as a secondary choice if needed. And my question is, you know, what would be the process um in terms of who determines who, uh, who goes virtual? It would be an application process? Would it be a committee looking at um the students who are applying? Would it, would it be equitable? Would it, would it be a cross section of students um if we, if we have that model in place? So those are some of the concerns and questions that I have in terms of that virtual model. What would it look like? Um, cause I know Virtual Virginia, a lot of students over the years would take a course or two through Virtual Virginia, but it wasn't like, you know, it was just a course, maybe they couldn't fit it in their schedule, but they would take a Virtual Virginia course. So I don't know how that would look like if you have students sixth and seventh, because those courses are rigorous and very demanding. So um, how does that look like? How many courses would a student be able to take in Virtual Virginia? As a former counselor, that would be concerning to me. Yeah, because of the rigor.
And, and, and those are things that we would explore. Um, uh, Virtual Virginia, Jessica Brantley is here in case she can share more about Virtual Virginia. But I know that um for high school, the courses, they're per course. So if a student does, if a family does opt to uh be virtual and, and we move in that Virtual Virginia direction, which is what we are aiming to do, then the student would, uh, Virtual Virginia would work with the student on, on those courses to take. Uh, so that they, there's a lot of flexibility um in Virtual Virginia. And, and they've been doing this for years. So uh it is my understanding that they would be able to work with the student to, to um ensure that they are not overloaded and overburdened and, and yet get the courses that they need. Jessica, anything else that you would be able to add about Virtual Virginia?
Um, I can. So the school counselors would enroll students so they best know their students workload. So for the um secondary students, they would be enrolled in the classes that they need and would be able to modify how many they could enroll in. For K5, it would be um like a full program. It's like a set amount of classes, etcetera. But there are enrollment periods for Virtual Virginia. So the students, if we were to use that, would have to be identified early and enrolled by July 15th. So it wouldn't be ideal for a mid-year um, a student to try to all of a sudden do virtual mid-year. Because once the deadline has happened, students are enrolled and then they start their, their fall or the yearly cohort. So it's not a rolling enrollment. We would have a pretty strict deadline if we were to use um Virtual Virginia for any instruction.
That is really early, Ms. Brantley. And then again, I'm getting a little confused because, I mean, up until this point, we've used Virtual Virginia for classes here and there. Kids have been onsite using that modality to take that class. Therefore, they get the credit um or the credit hours because they're onsite. But are we talking about using Virtual Virginia as our platform for a family who may opt to keep their student home?
Yes, that is correct.
And then how do we get around that? How do they get credit for those hours if they're not?
Um, I, I think I can answer. So that if they're fully at home, but they're enrolled in one of our schools, um, and they are enrolled before the deadline, then they could be a full-time student taking courses through Virtual Virginia, but be enrolled in our school. That's how we get um credit for it as a school division. So they would have the Virtual Virginia teachers and the Virtual Virginia courses, but they're still enrolled with Charlottesville City Schools. So the school division is responsible for supplying the technology and having an onsite mentor to connect with the students um at the school uh as a liaison with Virtual Virginia. That also uh applies to special education services. So the teachers, um, if students have uh needs, they can accommodate some of the things on, the things on the IEP, but they don't have a, a special education person at Virtual Virginia. So the school that they are enrolled in is responsible for support in that area as well.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to interrupt whoever was asking those questions, sorry.
And um, I think, Mr. Bryant, did we answer your questions?
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Wade, did you have any other questions? Or any questions?
Thank you, Jessica.
Anytime.
I don't hear him. Jennifer, did you have questions, Ms. McKeever? All right, well, I'm not sure where they are. I have questions, please, um, if I may. So I, I, I do also appreciate the may's and, and we're trying to kind of lay the groundwork for um what, what we do need to and want to offer um based on current legislation and what the governor is saying. Um, I feel like there is a good chance that we are going to have families who are not comfortable um bringing their kids or sending their kids back into the building for a variety of reasons. And I, I hope and I want to know that this uh school division is, is going to support them. And I think we are, I think that we are saying that. I think um COVID has presented an opportunity. Um, it, it's, it's been a challenge. Um, the teachers and staff and everybody have just worked really, really hard um throughout the year. And I think we've learned um that virtual instruction has worked really, really well for some kids. I mean, when we're talking about equity, there are some kids that we may not have, have had engaged at, at all if, when they were face to face. And I've heard from, from teachers that they had students that um were not engaged when we were face to face pre-COVID. And um now virtually, you know, students have fe- this, a, a particular student has figured out how to manage their behaviors on the screen and um, and has just blossomed um with this virtual opportunity. And, and I don't want to lose that as an option for some kids who might need that. I have also heard that there are teachers and um within the division who have thrived and are just incredible and love teaching virtually. Um, so I, I would hope that we can have a discussion um about whether there is space to do something different. Um, and I know we, we can't answer that, but, and I think this is a bigger discussion than right now. But I don't want to lose the opportunity to at least um say these things publicly and, and during the meeting. Um, so I don't know that Virtual Virginia is the answer. I, I don't, and I realize that, you know, to, to offer um virtual synchronous options for students, you know, that, that's staffing and I, I get it. Um, and I, and I know that that's a big discussion that we need to have. But um I, I, I think we as a board and a division, you know, we need to um not lose sight of, of the students that, that this worked really well for um as far as the virtual piece, you know, and, and see what we can do to, to meet the needs of them. Um, and also to l- look at and listen to and, and get feedback from students, from teachers, from parents about what worked, what didn't work. Um, and, and be willing to um sit down and, and look at what we can do that's, that's different and better, because that's kind of what we're all about. So I would really appreciate um the opportunity to, to be creative and, and to figure out ways that we can get that, that feedback. Um, and to have a deeper, you know, a deeper dive and conversation around this as we continue to, to look at, you know, what we kind of have to do. But I hope we can do more than that. Um, so that's kind of my comments for right now. Anybody else have any questions? All right, then I think, um, thank you, Dr. Odi, for, for all of that. Um, you know, nothing like signing legislation the night before we have a meeting and we've all been waiting for that legislation and watching it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's move on to the superintendent's naming advisory task force process update, please.
All right, uh, tonight, Dr. Baptist, our CTE coordinator and special projects coordinator will come before you again to present an update on the superintendent's naming advisory task force process. Dr. Baptist.
Thank you and welcome again, uh chairman and school board members and Dr. Odi. Uh, we also have with us tonight Monica Blair, who is a national fellow with the Jefferson Scholar Foundation and a PhD candidate at UVA. We're gonna divide this up. I'm gonna kind of tell you where we've been and she's gonna tell you some of what we want to do next. Uh, you may remember back in the fall, several uh superintendent advisory committees were formed and the naming of facilities was one of them. So the committee started meeting in the fall and we organized and we um had one committee that was called the Process Subcommittee. And that committee has continued to meet to really talk about what is the process we need to follow, because this is a big topic. This is one that we think will have much community interest and want to make sure that all stakeholders are involved. So the Process Committee started talking about a strategy that would be a better way of handling this process. And we, we looked at how other communities had also handled naming of facilities. And if you've seen in the media, there's some communities who've handled it very well, had a great process, and some have not handled it as well. So we want to make sure that as we move forward, we are doing it the way that our community would want it to be. So the Process Committee met, came up with some recommendations of how to carry forward. And in March, the entire committee met and we agreed upon the process that we will uh follow moving forward. We do want the community to know that at this point, there has been no decision made that any building needs to be renamed. As we look at buildings, we will talk about uh, you know, lots of different things, but just want the community to know we have not decided, made any decisions about what should be named or if anything needs to be named, what the name should be. We started out with some information, I'm sure many of you have seen it, that Phil Varner has done, a community member, about the history of names. And as I read that, I learned a lot about the names of our buildings that I had no idea. And I've been associated with the buildings for quite a few years. So we're using that as a starting place. And now we're really ready to get to work on the process. So without further ado, Monica, thank you for being with us tonight. She is such a talented young lady and she has been involved in talking about some of the naming at uh facilities at UVA. So we're delighted to have her on our committee and she's gonna tell us what we're gonna do next. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you so much, Beth, and thank you everyone for having me here today. So yes, um, as Beth spoke about, we have developed this long process meeting, process over the last several months over multiple meetings. And ultimately, what we decided to do going forward is we uh sort of divided the process into three phases. So phase one is what we kind of just wrapped up, which was developing um a plan for, and look, and using, developing that plan based on other neighborhoods, school boards, and kind of picking and, and realizing what worked there to try and implement it here in Charlottesville City Schools. And now we're going into phase two, which is um deciding which school should be renamed. And then phase three will be if, once we, and, or if we decide to rename some of our schools, how, what kind of guidelines will we use to pick a new name? And how will we garner community input for that? So as we're going into phase two, looking at schools and deciding whether they should be renamed, we voted as a committee to first consider whether Venable Elementary and all, whether Clark um Elementary should be renamed. So those will be the first two schools we'll be doing a full kind of historical community input review of. Um, and then after we, we will go through phase two with those schools if we decide to rename them and pick new names before we go back to kind of phase two with additional schools if we decide to include them in review. So we're looking at all schools. But the decision to start with two schools to consider for renaming was just based on the idea that that would help us, um, give us the kind of capacity to really make sure we're doing a thorough job looking at the history of these schools and the history of the men that they are named after. And also make sure that the community has ample time to give us input, because we thought if we, if we sent out 13, you know, names at once, it, it could kind of overwhelm. And we want to make sure we do it right. And so as we go into phase two, we have kind of three prongs. One is our own historical research, which is building after Phil Varner's excellent work. He's done a lot of great legwork for us to build off on, on these two schools, so we could use that as a baseline. And then we're gonna get community input. And we're gonna do that through a couple different ways. So first, we're gonna do broad community input through both a survey and a focus group. So we're gonna invite people to come to a focus group um and give their input about the names. And when we do that focus group, we're gonna start with a historical presentation so that people who come have some kind of knowledge as they, as they share their feedback with us. Um, and then we'll gather that input. And then we're also gonna do um some targeted outreach to community stakeholders um who are, we would love to have at our big uh focus group and answer our surveys as well, but just to make sure that they get included. Um, so for instance, um, members of the Charlottesville 12 are important for um this process. Uh, the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center, um, other community partners like that. Um, a lot, and certain, you know, parent boards at the schools, making sure we're taking, we're uh trying to give the feedback of people who are really affected by these issues of equity in the naming of these schools. And so once we have uh finished those kind of overviews of first Venable and Clark, we will then present to the board our recommendations um that will overlay the history that we have discovered, the community input, and especially the, and also the community input of, of specific stakeholders that really have a vested interest in here and are affected by these changes. And then if, if the board votes that we should rename those schools, we will then move into phase three, which will be um trying to gather input from the community about what a potential. which will be trying to gather input from the community about what a potential new name could be. And also kind of vetting those names. And so if, if we have community input, if we decide to rename the school, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence on the new potential names. And we're thinking about like Albemarle's controversy over Rose Hill, that Rose Hill was the name of the neighborhood. But then after they chose it, it was learned it was also the name of the plantation that was the neighborhood's namesake. So we want to make sure also that if we do decide to rename schools, that we make sure we really get broad community input and do historical research on whatever name we might choose going forward. So thank you all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. I'm going to open it up to questions, but I wanted to, if he's available, circle back and start with actually Mr. Johnson. I wanted to allow him to ask questions about this if he's available now and he may not be. And also allow him, because I neglected to ask him if he had any comments or questions about the fall return to school plan.
Well, I appreciate you circling back to me. I currently do not have any questions or comments, but I do appreciate you coming, circling back to me. And if I do have any of that pop up, I would, you know, surely be able to put that in chat for everybody to see. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, on my screen, I'm seeing Ms. Perrier. Do you have any questions? Nope, okay.
I have a question. I mean, I have a comment.
All right, Jennifer.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Baptist and Ms. Blair for their work here. You know how pretty much every day I'm reminded of all of the work that our division is doing in all of the efforts that are being made. And like, I think I was the chair when, when, when this was formed, this particular committee was formed. But then I was like, what is this commit? I mean, I knew we wanted to do it, but I couldn't. I'm so grateful to see that you guys have come so far and are really bringing us something that, you know, honestly, it's just amazing. It feels, I know it's so much hard work, but it's really gratifying to see this happen. And even in the midst of what is just constant drumbeat of things to do in a quote, unpress, unquote, unquote, unprecedented time. So thank you very much. I'm excited that we are moving forward, that you guys have done all of this great work into creating this process, which I, I know will, will bring in meaningful public comment and provide transparency and, and stakeholder voice. So I thank you very much. I can't tell you how grateful I am, especially in light of all of the other things that this division is working on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Dr. Kraft?
Well, I don't have a question, but you know, my thought is that this is something that is really important for the entire Charlottesville community. So it's not just about our school division. It's about the whole city. And I think it is deeply meaningful, you know, especially, you know, given sort of what the city is going through now and has been for the past few years in, in our own reckoning with our past. So I'm, you know, I think there, there's some wonderful people involved in this effort and I'm very glad we're taking it on and doing this.
Yeah, thank you, Sheri. And we absolutely agree. And so when we have our, our community forum, for instance, we're not just going to email the parents. We're also going to reach out to the broader community and also like a digital space where hopefully we can get Charlottesville community residents to be able to have an, an ability to talk to us and then also through targeted outreach. So, yeah, absolutely.
And we don't have a timeline that we say that we've got to get this done. It's not a race. We want to make sure we do it correctly. And as Monica said, we, we chose two schools and we chose that based on the chronological nature of those schools being named. So we didn't pick them first for any other reason. And so we want to really look at it. And if we're still working on this, this time next year, then we're still going to be working on it this time next year for these schools or whatever schools. We want to get it right.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that just getting input on something like this in any form or fashion will be critical because a lot of, most critical input will be from people that may not come to the forums or fill out the surveys and things like that. That targeted output is going to be essential that we will have to go to them instead of them coming to us, so.
And with that, Mr. Wade, I would encourage any board members, if you have recommendations for us, for stakeholders in various parts of the community that you think we may not have considered, please let us know because we do want to make sure we, we include all the different groups that would want to be a part of this decision.
I'll put some in chat.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, not just that, but if we have, I mean, I hope the public that's listening or all of us can, can share this out. You know, and if there are ways, I mean, are you guys open to, it sounds like you are, different means of outreach, you know, or specific targeted areas that really want to be heard. And so, you know, if we are out and about in the community and having conversations with people and, and think to bring this up, you know, so I, I think we can all help to, to push this out.
We'll make sure that you know when the next steps are so that you can help us share whatever information.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
And, and people are adding some groups in here, some that we have considered and some I hadn't thought of, so thank you.
All right, let's see. Mr. Bryant, did you have any questions, comments?
I have a question. I have a comment. Dr. Baptist, I think I was initially selected to be on one of these committees, but for some reason, we even haven't, we have not met, or I forgot which one of the committees I was on.
Well, you and Ms. Dr. Kraft both just said something. And I have, I mean, you're on the list and we had a meeting in March, so I sent it out from that list. I don't know what happened, but we'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? I'm sorry. Nope. All right. Thank you both. It sounds like a great process and I look forward to hearing further updates. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Monica.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
All right, I think that wraps up our items for discussion and we are ready to move on to our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. Again, with a reminder to please state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you will raise your hand in the chat or in your room, wherever you're at. And Mr. Como can, can announce your presence, please.
Yeah, I'll give people a few seconds if they wish to raise their hand or message us in the chat. And I'll be glad to unmute you and give you this time to speak during public comment.
And I'm, I'm very happy to see your little timer addition in our meeting.
Oh, good. Yes.
Thank you.
There it is. I don't see any hands at this time, so we can, we can send it back to you for a few extra seconds of, of, of waiting. And then if I see anything, I will certainly holler.
Okay, we'll wait a few seconds and then we will be moving on to board member comments.
Yep, we're still all clear.
All right, thank, thank you. I will move into board member comments. And I'm going to start, since you're up in the upper left-hand corner of my screen, Ms. Leshunder Bryson-Morse, Morseberger, please.
Um, I just wanted to comment tonight on the, the concerns that the community and teachers are voicing about the principal hiring at Clark. And just also, it's added on to a chorus of instances where as a division, we've had unforced errors and transparency, you know, like just, it's just not working the way it is. So we have to do a better, a better job of transparency. We can't take votes that, to move forward on actions when the, the public doesn't have noticed. So I think, you know, just as a board at our retreat, we really need to talk about, you know, transparency for our meetings, what's coming up on the agenda. And then when we do this search for a new superintendent, like the vision we have for how transparency should work. Because my, you know, my background is in HR and nothing drives out people more than feeling like, you know, they are not, their work isn't seen or appreciated. And it seems like we have amazing internal candidates for a lot of our jobs and they get overlooked. And so I, I just feel like we really have to do a better job on transparency. And, and we have to do a better job of letting people know when they need to show up to a meeting. We need to have a deadline about what's on the agenda and when it's posted with no changes after that. But I just think, you know, we really need to think about the direction we want to go in as far as transparency and communication because it's not working as is. And just a question out there for the, for the chair or whoever can answer it or follow up. Are we taking a pause on hiring since we don't have a new superintendent? Because I feel like we should wait on some of these big hires until the new person comes so they can have some input on, you know, the, the principals that we're hiring and key roles that are being filled, that we should pause those.
All right, thank you. Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, well, I would just like to also acknowledge the members of the, of the Clark community who spoke to us tonight and voiced their concerns and their love for that school. And I just want to say that they deserve our attention. I'm paying attention. And appreciate them, you know, taking, taking the time to do that and just, you know, let us know where they're coming from and what they feel they need. And I hope we can honor some of that in our process as we go forward. And I guess the, the one other thing I just want to circle back to is, it was mentioned in the first public comment. We have, we have so much going on. It's, it's kind of, you know, head spinning all the time, I think, for so many of us. The reconfiguration is something that I really don't want us to lose sight of. It's, it's really important for our division to keep moving ahead on this. So I just want to do that. I want to move ahead on this. I know we have, you know, there, there's a lot of change happening now in the division. And it would be easy just to kind of put that off for another year and not do anything, but I think that would be a big mistake. And in order for our division to sort of move to the next level, I think that's really an integral part of, of our process now. So both, you know, one of my passions is the early childhood center. I really want to see that happen. But I really also want to see our, a new state-of-the-art middle school for us. I think it will make a huge difference. So I just want to put that out there. I just want to make sure that we're not forgetting about this. And beyond that, I guess we're all going to be looking forward to a little bit of spring break. And then I'm very excited to see the return of our Buford and CHS students right after spring break. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Mr. Bryant?
Yes, first and foremost, I'd like to continue the conversation with Dr. Kraft. What she had said in regards to those who spoke from Clark School, I think it's very important that we listen to those voices. Many of them came across as very passionate and I think it, it, it gives us pause and we need to, to be vigilant and, and provide feedback to those, those individuals who spoke. I think that's extremely important that we listen to those voices. Reconfiguration too, let's not lose our sight on that. Let's keep our eyes on the prize. To hopefully one day we'll see a new middle school state of the art and cut down on those transitions that happened when I was at Walker from three to four. So, so those students, also those fifth graders can go back to the elementary schools and we can cut down on the, the number of transitions. So we must continue to keep our eye on that reconfiguration. Certainly I was feeling somewhat down at the beginning of the meeting, but after hearing all those wonderful summer school options for our children, not only for academics, but also just for cultural enrichment. I want to thank all those partners in our community who have partnered with the Charlottesville City Schools to provide great opportunities for our students this summer. And I'm hoping that after it's all said and done, the principals have, have selected those students to participate in some of these programs that our parents will step up and, and get those kids enrolled. And, and it's good to know that, that finance will not be a barrier for many of these programs. So I'm excited about the opportunities after many of us have all have been locked down for a year just about because of the pandemic, the kids can get an opportunity to, to get not only enrichment but academic rigor as well this summer. So I think that, that makes me feel really good. And I know the board is excited about those opportunities for our children in the Charlottesville City Schools. And also the fact that hopefully students will be going back face to face in the fall. So that's, that's real exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. McKeever?
Hi, thank you. A couple of things I wanted to, well, I have actually a couple of things. One is with respect to reconfiguration, there is something on the calendar for that. We haven't. And by any, by any stretch of the imagination, lost sight of that, I, I don't, the implication of that is a little unfortunate given the extraordinary amount of things that are actually on our plates right now. But yeah, reconfiguration, there's another CIP meeting scheduled for April. And we should have the final plans around the reconfiguration, like the RFP and the kind of timeline, hopefully, moving forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is with respect to the Clark finalists, I would like this board to direct our HR department to go back and restart the search. I think that's, I, I think, I, I have no opinion on Mr. Tillman personally. I just think that we should direct a more transparent process. And this is not a school that we can take lightly or for granted, not that we do at any schools, but I'm very concerned about this process and it does seem like it was a really flawed process. And I would like this board to direct our superintendent and her staff to go forward and restart the process. And ensure that we have an incredibly heavy public comment along with many, and just identifying criteria for what the Clark community wants in their principal. I think that they have not had the opportunity to really be around the decision-making process for hiring their principal in so long. And I would just, I just think it's a really important value of ours that we need to kind of live. So I, I don't, I, I don't think I need to, I don't know if we need to motion to make that action happen. I hope not because we don't, we haven't, I think, you know, it, we, we always approved personnel things, but I don't know. Anybody have any ideas about how to move forward with that?
So Jennifer, this is one, I was going to make the same suggestion as well. I, I, I think that we should direct the chair to work with the HR director, the current superintendent and, and/or the interim superintendent to revisit this whole process as the emails we received and the message that we to revisit this whole process as the emails we received and the message that we got tonight. You know, I completely concur about Clark as someone before the pandemic that visited there on a regular basis, visited those classrooms and was there in the morning when they were getting off the buses. It is a special place and 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 this is something, I guess, with everything that's going on, that quite frankly, I, I just overlook, you know, until I start getting the emails and I'm ashamed of that. We just want to, we need to have the process and the principal that everyone has some a say into. And that's not saying anything about the, the Mr. Tillman. I did heard great things about him, but I've never met him. Or the current candidates that we have, it may be unfair to them, but we need to make sure that the process is more open and and that more input from the public. So I'll direct, I think we should direct the the chair to, you know, in addition to everything else that she has going on to to do this. But I think that if we can direct Dr. Hubbard and Rosa and Jim, you know, to that this is what the board desires, I think that that should should be enough. Because I don't think at this point, if a principal will come up, that we would approve that as part of the personnel package. But.
Does that seem reasonable, Lisa?
I'm, I'm happy to to accept and take that direction. Yes.
I'm comfortable with that, too. I, I was cringing at making a motion at this during board comments again. So I'd rather not do that, but I think that we can have a sense of the board on this.
I'm comfortable with that, Lisa, as well.
I, I'm happy to do that. So thank you for that. And I can reach out to people tomorrow to start that process and and those discussions.
Great, thank you. I have a few other things I just wanted to ask about. One is, when is graduation? So I just heard this morning that it may be June 5th on our calendar in CCS. It says June 10th, 7:00 PM tentative. The, so of course, I don't know, I have a graduate potential, you know, coming up. And I remember we made a change one time, one year, about nine months in advance. And we got all sorts of heck for making that change so late in the process. So I think it'd be good to let us know if there's going to be a change in the date for graduation from June 10th. Anybody have any comments about what the graduation date is?
Well, Dr. Irazari has left the meeting. There have been a few dates that he, that we've sort of bounced around. June 5th was one of them. June 12th was another. So Kim, do you know as far as planning for the space, what he landed on?
I'm actually not 100% sure. I'm working on the setups, but I'm, I don't want to speak about the date because in this moment, I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
We'll come back to you with that information. We'll get that to you.
Just to the parents, not to me.
We'll make sure that he communicates with his community.
Thank you. Okay, really critical that we get that before the end of gross set, spring break. Like, can we just lock it in? I mean, it's just really happening quickly. Okay, so then another. I have so many questions, but they, I do want to reiterate my strong support for permitting fine arts performances outdoors and in safe environments. It certainly has been happening throughout the state. So I just want to ensure that we are moving in that direction as safely and as quickly as possible. I also have a concern. I want to ensure that we're not allowing or what policy we are allowing any private camps to use our facilities. So my understanding is that we have, I don't want to mention it, but I understand that we're a private group is using our facilities for a camp. And I just would like to understand a little bit more about the policy that allows us to do that and to see if that is something that we want to continue to allow. So and then with respect to Venable, right now, we have a kind of informal policy related to preschool and West Haven and inviting parents to, you know, choose which school they would like to go to, which I would, I fundamentally think that we need to formalize in the next couple of months. The, we just need to formalize it because I feel like one of, it's one of those things is going to be on our plate and then it's going to kind of fall through the cracks. And then suddenly we're like, how, you know, who knows what the outcome of that could be? And I just want to make sure that we're formalizing either choice for West Haven parents or redistricting for West Haven parents to Venable. And then reconfiguring foundation. I do want to have a discussion about foundation sooner rather than later. Because there are some parents, obviously, Chris Meyer mentioned earlier, you know, they raised tons of money early on for us and we're so grateful for it, but I want to make sure that we when we start our own, I feel like we have too much on our plate right now. But I know that that we have parents who are just chomping at the bit to help us raise money for reconfiguration of their needs. And I was wondering if we would, if anybody on the board would be interested in helping a group of parents kind of coalesce around a foundation, like foundation goals. I, I don't, I, I'm just trying to, I think we need to have a conversation, maybe at the retreat would be a better time to talk about that. If we can add that to the agenda for any retreat. And then, so I want to also remember the governor also just announced today that April 19th, everybody 16 and up will be eligible to receive the vaccine. Please sign up your children if you, you know, 16 and up. Go register on the VDH website and try to find them some appointments after April 19th. You know, we're just, we have to protect our community as soon as, you know, and the best week to do that is to, of course, wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance and get a vaccine. So I'd like to encourage people who, you know, to, if they have questions, talk to their doctors, but also to, you know, sign your, your 16 plus children up for a vaccine. And one of the other things I wanted to mention is that, let's see, we do have a deadline for when we make our agenda known, and that is the Friday before our meeting. Governing is not a static thing. So we do need some flexibility to have diet, you know, to be dynamic in our approach. And that's why our agendas change sometimes after that Friday deadline. And that's why we need a majority vote to make any decisions. So I, I think it's, this board is doing the best they can. I mean, we, it's always good to commit to growth opportunities and learning. And transparency is certainly a value of this board. And I, I agree that there have been some challenging decisions. And I think this board has tried to make it right every time there have been. And so while I would have always, in the past, been frustrated by the agenda not coming really, you know, like many items not coming out until the day before. I recognize now how difficult it is for staff to get those items to us. And I also recognize how dynamic the governing process is. So we do our best and I really do appreciate Ms. Torres working with our superintendent and of course, our staff to get us all the information we can as quick as possible. So that's all I have to say. And thank you so much for letting me say all that.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I can answer one question that Ms. McKeever had about graduation. There is an announcement going out tomorrow. It will be on June 5th at 9 o'clock. But the announcement tomorrow will share more information. Thank you.
Okay, who we got? Mr. Wade?
I have mentioned my comments about Clark, so I won't elaborate on that. Thank you for following through with that, Madam Chair. And I also just want to reiterate and support the board members efforts to get the fine arts program up and going. Again, I would like to do anything we can within the guidelines, within the government, the govern, the governors. What, what, what is it?
Executive order.
Executive order, you know, to, to just to make it, you know, make it happen. I know that right down the street at the technical gardens, they have some space out there. They can be, if they've kind of carved out even before the, the garden is officially there, that can be some space out in the open. We just need to make it happen if we can. That being said, I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Perrier.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Johnson, our student board representative. He did a marvelous job with his webinar. Okay, so I'm not going to ask him a question because I know Mr. Johnson and I, we have a question. And we're going to secretly ask that question to Dr. Hastings before the semester's over. So be ready, Dr. Hastings. It was simply amazing. You and your crew or your posse, whatever you want to call them, it was amazing. It was all student driven. The students ran the webinar. And I was just sitting there watching. When my screen went blank, it was because I was just welling up with pride. And I know that Dr. Irazari is just beaming because Black Knight Pride was all over that event. And Ms. Terrell and Ms. Mason, as your little cheerleaders on the side and your advisors. So my hat is off to you. And the next time I need to plan a webinar, I'm going to call you and have you get it all organized and all done. Because it was fabulous. And being a mother of an African American man, seeing the African American men speak, not only to all of us that were there, but speaking about things that many of us may know, some of us don't know, but just putting it out there unapologetically. And people always talk about having a safe space. Although that was something that was aired, it was a safe place. And Mr. Johnson, you need to be proud because you rocked it. You rocked it.
Indeed, you did, Ms. Perrier. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
If, if I could, I'm, Ms. Perrier, I'm not, I'm trying not to cry on this meeting. Because I, I was planning on, I had to leave, but I, I have to respond that. I mean, this period, I've, I've told you in the, in the past, you know, how much, you know, your, your words have meant to me. And that goes to the entire board as well, the way you guys have welcomed me into this board family. I, I can't do anything but just tell you thank you. You know, the, the kind words from the community and from you guys are what keep me, keep me going and make me want to do what I do. So, you know, this is, that event was definitely, you know, exactly what I wanted to be. It's definitely at the last event that I will have of that nature. And I believe I said that throughout that meeting. Ms. Perrier, just thank you again and try not to get emotional. But I, I really do thank you guys and the, the love and support you guys showed on camera and all the emails that you all sent me. I, I really do appreciate it. Yeah, so yeah, just thank you again, Ms. Perrier, and thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm mute, I'm, I'm mute myself before I cry, but thank, thank you. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. It's, it's been an honor to have you serving with us. And he is a freshman, correct, Ms. Perrier?
He is. But Dr. Irazari has got his work cut out for him. Because he's just given us such great student reps. So I don't know, I don't know how many students we have over there, Dr. Eyes, is it 1,100, is it 1,300? How many more student board reps can we get? Because you've got them just in the pipeline. I know you do. I know you do.
Well, we've got 1,100 strong.
Oh, good. Well, see, we've got plenty more student reps to come, Charlottesville City School Board. We just have a whole, we're just so, so excited. Yep, yep, yep.
Well, not, not just that, but you know, just if, for those who were able to to join his webinar. I mean, just the, the fact that who knows what's to come? I mean, it is just incredible listening to him. And I knew that, but when I heard him say, again, I'm a freshman, I was like, oh, my gosh. Yeah, we, we need to hold on because this, this young, young man and and all of the people that he had, you know, they're, they're going places and and it was very impressive. So thank you, everybody, for comments. I do have a couple of comments myself and and questions. I wanted to thank all of the community, the Clark community. Thank you for reaching out to us via email. And then also tonight, I do appreciate that. There were a couple of things that I was made aware of today that I feel like are kind of exciting going forward for our community that will impact and are pretty cool for us this year, the rest of this remaining school year and potentially into next year. And this first item, I was going to ask Dr. Baptist if she wouldn't mind. It has to do with an opportunity for our division to be part of, I believe, a trial to have symptomatic and random testing within the division. So I will hand it over to Dr. Baptist. You're muted.
I was unmuted and muted when I got ready to speak. Sorry about that. Ms. Torres, thank you. Yes, the school divisions will have the opportunity to be part of one or two pilots. One is a diagnostic testing, one is a screening testing where we would be able to do what we have as the antigen or the rapid test in schools. We've just gotten a little bit of information about it. I don't have all of it yet. And I've, I received this afternoon two PowerPoints and I've been trying to compare them to really see where some of the differences are. And I've not been able to determine it yet. And I've also been in touch with a couple of doctors in the community to, to get understanding from them as well. But it would offer us the possibility of doing some testing in the schools. One would be a random testing of about 10% per week. One is more of a diagnostic test. So we want to look into it. It's not officially open yet for us to apply to do it. But a couple of the terminology pieces I didn't understand. So I have asked a local pediatrician to explain some of it to me. And we will move forward to see whether we would be accepted to be in one of the pilots. The state, well, the Health Department, I guess it is, now, I was going to say Department of Ed, but I think it's the Health Department, would be actually funding much of this through June 30th and would then determine whether they would continue to fund this. We will have to provide our own PPE, which I think we could do that. But they would help us with all of the testing supplies and the hiring of people to do the actual testing. So as we know more, I will be glad to share more, but that's sort of what I know at this point. But it is exciting to know that we could find out quicker about students who could be asymptomatic or, you know, and spreading it throughout the schools or even students who are symptomatic. So as I know more, I will be glad to tell you more.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, I felt, I felt like that was really exciting. It's something I've been asking about for a while. And, and there were just a lot of barriers, you know. So it sounds like with the grant funding and, you know, the fact that they will bring some people in to do training and all of that, it, it sounds like a great opportunity. So I'm excited that Charlottesville City Schools will be part of that potential.
Well, we hope so. We have to be selected. And, and in talking to pediatricians, one of the things that they really feel like is going to be very important is if we could get UVA or, you know, another medical institution, but UVA would be the one who would actually partner with us to do more of the PCR testing. Because we know with the rapid test, we don't always get the accurate results. So if we could back it up with the PCR test, we'd be in much better shape to slow the spread, if you will. So I have told Dr. Periello, who's one person I've been speaking with, and I've asked her to give us the names of who we might want to reach out to at UVA, who could help us with the PCR testing or any, you know, further work. And I said, I was sure that the school board would want to hear about it and would possibly. about it and would possibly support if we could get them to help us to go one step farther than what this proposal would be.
Absolutely. I mean, I've, I've done some of the volunteer testing throughout the summer with UVA and, and their testing throughout the community. And I may have a couple of names because I've talked about that with them, you know, if there was ever an opportunity to partner with them. So I will, I will touch base with you. So thank you for that.
Sure.
And then another question I had on behalf of the, the whole division and the school board, and, and thank you, Ms. Powell, for your updates, but was just to get a quick update on transportation and especially as we are looking to April 12th.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am very excited to give this update this evening because additional information has come to me even during the meeting this evening. So first of all, on Monday, effective Monday, we were able to clear our waiting list for pre-K through four, so all six elementary schools. And that was two weeks ahead of what we had originally thought was going to be our best case scenario. The last of our pre-K through four waitlist was at Greenbrier. And we thought it was going to be after spring break before we could clear it, but we, we were able to clear that starting Monday. Next, I'm so happy to report that as of April 12th, and this is the news that came in tonight, all students that requested transportation for CHS, Beaufort and Walker will have a bus seat. This almost makes me want to cry. What I can tell you is Walker, we cleared their initial waitlist, but then Adam and his team have been doing such a great job being so aggressive, getting students in that want to come in. They, they, there was another waitlist that emerged after we cleared the first one for another 27 students. And our, our principals haven't even heard this news yet because it literally just came into me as a text during the meeting.
Wait, say it again, one more time.
April 12th, all students that requested transportation for CHS, Beaufort and Walker will have a seat. And we cleared the pre-K four waitlist this past Monday. This is huge.
Woo, yay!
Yes. I'm so grateful. I need to give a big shout out to Sherri Eubanks. I hope she's still tuned in. Amy Herndon, our transportation team, they have worked so hard with us and with our principals. And I know this has been hard on our families, but I also want to share with you all that in addition to the drivers that have come on board to clear the waitlist to this point, transportation has been able to hire three additional drivers that will be trained and in place by mid-May. They have rolled out a huge advertising campaign and will be participating in a virtual hiring event with multiple school divisions around us on May 1st. So the work continues and I definitely need to give, we need to give a big shout out to Dr. Kraft, who reached out to Delegate Hudson. And whatever Delegate Hudson did with DMV has made a world of difference for us in recovering the drivers that we lost since December. You know, we had, transportation wasn't sitting on their hands. They had hired people, but because of the waiting process to get through DMV to be eligible to drive, people just simply couldn't wait that long to be processed to, to join our driver pool. And when you couple that with a lot of turnover in the driver population anyway, it was just a really tough, almost a no win situation. And that breakthrough with DMV, we just can't overstate how important that was. So on behalf of Sherri Eubanks and her team, she also included that in a message, which I would have said it anyway, but it was another reminder because I've heard it from her several times, how, just how valuable that's been. So really my heart is full because this has been a really huge and difficult process for a lot of us and, and for our families. So, so happy.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That is such great news. So I know a lot of, a lot of changes, a lot of work are being done by everybody. And we're ready to roll into spring break here. So thank you for all of that. I will, I was ready to announce our next meetings, but we have superintendent comments. So Dr. Odie, if you have comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Leslie, if you could please put up that slideshow of our winners. Okay. So congratulations to the following students who placed in the 2021 Student Art Contest, which is held in conjunction with the V SBA Spring Regional Forms. Each school division is requested to submit three pieces of student art, one per category in elementary K5, middle school 6, 8, and high school 9, 12. So you see there, we've got for elementary first place, Charlotte Dantonville in fifth grade. And middle school, third place, Levi Baling, I think, in eighth grade. And for high school, we had a third place for Luke Roberts in 11th grade. So we want to congratulate those students for their great artwork and for the places that they made in our, in the V SBA contest. So, and then next slide, we have some VIPs. So if you all remember, we did recognize VIPs for, for several months, and these were teachers that were nominated by their colleagues for just great virtual instruction. VIP stands for virtual instruction role. We have concluded that recognition, but we didn't get to share them last time. So if we can go to the next slide, we have before us the following. Teresa Amasia, ISTEM teacher at Burnley Moran in Venable. Emily Axelmann, third grade teacher at Jackson Bay. Ariel Bruner, kindergarten teacher at Clark. Elizabeth Tyson, math teacher and department chair at CHS. And then we have Kelsey Bobbitt, instructional assistant at Johnson. Katie Holler, Spanish teacher at CHS. Emily Queen, Sped Lee teacher and collaborative teacher at Beaufort. Orlando Tillman, assistant principal at Clark. Amy Wizardkirk, fifth grade math, science, math and science at Walker Upper Elementary. And we also had Marsha Johnson, first grade instructional assistant at Clark. Lindsay Camide, maybe, I apologize if I've said it wrong, K through four reading specialist at Johnson. Ryan Trot, art teacher at Burnley Moran. And Matt Wilson, PE and art teacher and department chair at CHS. So congratulations to all of them. We are so proud of the work that they've done. We've really had lots and lots of nominations and so many that could have won. We decided to narrow it down to three, four, five a week and really great teaching going out there during our virtual time. We will begin a new recognition process after we return from spring break. We will be recognizing those who we are calling unsung heroes. Those are cafeteria workers, bus drivers, custodians, others that typically aren't necessarily recognized. These are those that have been going above and beyond the call of duty. So we'll send out a nomination process on Monday, the 12th, when we return. And as we had been doing, we'll have nominations submitted by each Thursday. And we'll announce several winners, several folks that who have been selected to be recognized on the following Monday for the rest of the year. And another piece of news, well, we're very excited about, we've, we've already mentioned it, we're excited about the returning secondary students on Monday, the 12th, right after spring break. And I just want to applaud the Beaufort and CHS teams. They have been working hard to prepare and they're ready. They will be ready for some smiling student faces on April 12th. So thank you, Dr. Turner, Dr. Irizarry, and your teams for preparing for our secondary students to return then. And another piece of news, as you know, as many of you know, Dr. King, Dr. Kendra King will be leaving us at the end of this month. This sadly, sadly for us, is her last school board meeting. And I would be remiss to not take this opportunity to thank her for her five years of service to Charlottesville City Schools. She has led with grace and excellence. The short time that I've known her, I've been highly impressed with her work ethic and her knowledge of so many things. That has truly been a bonus for our school division. So Dr. King, we, we appreciate the work that you've done. Your part that you play here in our school board meetings is just a small piece of all that you do each and every day, and we will absolutely miss you. We wish you well in North Carolina. We know that you'll be great in your new role there with your family. So.
Tune in anytime for wrap up, Dr. King. Come on now, just tune in. We on Zoom, tune in, you do wrap up.
That's right. That's right. My only other thing was have a great spring break. You got it, Dr. King. I always want to follow protocol. So thank you. And I was going to look to, I like to say yes, ma'am, to Ms. Perrier. And I was going to also look to the board chair for a head nod, but I feel like I haven't now. So thank you so much for those words and the class. I'm truly going to miss all of you and thoroughly appreciate it, the opportunity and just all of our time together making a difference for our students and our community. You all are wonderful, wonderful individuals and I'm rooting you all on for all the future supports and changes that you will continue to make for our city. So with that being said, for follow-up, we have provide access to a copy of the governor's orders at the board retreat for us to take note, to add to the discussion, to, to the agenda, discuss a process for transparency for board meetings, provide a follow-up on whether there will be a pause on hiring for key roles until the new superintendent is hired, share the policy that allows facility use by private organizations, for example, the one for the camp. And then there were a couple of other items that were referenced by Ms. McKeever that I need clarification of. I was trying to listen. There was about the West Haven families, a formalized process for them, if I could get clarification. And then also to add for board retreat about, I think it was, you were saying about reconfiguration, but it was another item to add. Do you remember, Ms. McKeever, what you were referencing?
Yes, when I was talking about the foundation.
A discussion around the foundation.
Thank you for the, for the board retreat. Okay.
And I can speak quickly to the West Haven policy. I did, and I apologize, Ms. McKeever, not responding to, but I have discussed that with Dr. Atkins today and have asked that she bring something to us, the board, in writing for us to, to look at and take action on or to incorporate as far as policy.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you. That's all that I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And, and I do wish you the best as you move on. And we'll always remember that smile right there. I just saw it very, very, I met you two around the, the special advisory committee table. So I wish you well. I just again, quickly want to thank everybody. You know, all the board members, community members, again, staff, as, as many of the board members have, have said, so many of you wear multiple hats and do so many things for this division and, and we are all so grateful for you. You know, I could name every single one of you. So I feel like if I name a couple of you, I'm going to leave someone out. So all of you, I'm just so much gratitude for all of the work that you do. So thank you again. And, and transportation, big news. So yay, big celebration for everybody there. And as far as upcoming meetings, we do have, again, and just quickly for the community, the school board, we, we will be having a closed session on April 12th. There will be an item during open, the open part of that or the public part of that meeting to address one item. So that is April 12th. And then we have.
13th.
13.
13.
I was just keeping y'all on your toes.
April Fool.
Okay. Okay, toes.
I got too many meetings lining up that week. That's the problem. Yes, Tuesday, April 13th at 5:00 PM. Our next regular meeting is Thursday, May 6th, and then June 10th, if we want to go out that far. So I appreciate everybody's spending their time with us tonight, if you've hung in there. And thank you all, all board members and, and everybody for your hard work and dedication. And everybody have a safe and wonderful spring break. So thank you. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned.